Call to order the Nanakuli Miley neighborhood board meeting. We are convening at the Nanakuli Public Library at eighty-nine dash zero seven zero Barrington Highway, Nanakuli High, um, Nanakuli, Hawaii, nine six seven nine two. We are also a hybrid virtual meeting on Webex. My name is Jermaine Myers. Welcome everyone in the room and on the internet. We are honored to have you all join us this evening. I see that we have eight board members present. We need five to establish quorum. So we have quorum. Let us begin. First and foremost, I call upon Board Member Malia Augustin to say, Pulekako. Malia?
Mahalo. If you can all bow your heads to the Lord, we thank you so much for this time and for this, uh, building, Lord, that we are able to meet together to discuss the concerns of our community. We praise you for deterring the storm, Lord, and just helping our community to, uh, work as one and become one unit, um, to ensure that we have a positive future, Lord. So we just pray for every person on their way, that you bring them here safely. And at the end of our meeting, Lord, today, that we all can leave with something, um, looking forward into the future. Imaua mahalenui loa. We praise you, we honor, we glorify you in Jesus' name, amen.
Mahalo, Malia. So let's go over the meeting rules, um, of speaking and order of decorum. Written on our agenda by our neighborhood commission, uh, for us to comply with Robert's rules, sunshine law, and the neighborhood board plan. Um, so on the agenda, speak, rules of speaking, anyone wishing to speak as acts, uh, is asked to raise their hand in person or on virtual, and when recognized by the chair to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under three minutes. And those giving reports are urged to keep their reports to less than three minutes as well. Please silence all electronic devices. Note, the board may act on an agenda item as required by the state sunshine law HRS ninety-two. Specific issues not noted on this agenda cannot be voted on. Unless added to the agenda, a two-thirds vote of six of the, this nine-member board is needed to add an item to the agenda. Items may not be added if they are of major importance and will affect a significant number of people. Order of decorum, the neighborhood plan states, uh, section two dash thirteen dash one oh four, standards of conduct. A, board members and the performance of their duties shall demonstrate by their example the highest standards of ethical conduct to the end that the public may justifiably have trust and confidence in the integrity of the neighborhood board system. Board members shall hold their offices or positions for the benefit of the public, shall recognize that the public's interest is their primary concern, and shall faithfully discharge the duties of their offices regardless of personal considerations. Um, so we've gone over the rules, housekeeping. Everyone, um, in the room, please be sure to sign your name on the attendance sheet on the community table at the back of the room. We need you to sign in for the record-keeping of the meeting minutes. We also have copies of. The restrooms are out to the back doors. Please note, we must end the meeting at ten PM. No overtime to honor sunshine law and our neighborhood board plan. Uh, neighborhood board, three-hour max meeting time for hybrid meetings. Board members, please don't touch the buttons on the microphones. They are set to be left in the on and controlled by the videographer and sound tech. Same for the microphone on the podium. Please don't play with the buttons. Everyone acknowledged by the chair to speak must speak into the microphones. That's the only way the people on virtual can hear any of us in the room and so that the meeting can be properly recorded for the Olelo broadcasts. Again, please speak into the microphone. Community members in the room and on virtual, please start with your full name when you come to, uh, speak at the microphone. At this time, I ask that the board members to say your full name and where you're from, starting from my left, Board Member Paul. Be speaking to the microphone, everyone. Mahalo. Next board member.
Hi, Naomi Hano Hano. I live in Princess Kahano. Thank you.
Kail Eight Seven One Three Four, Kimo Street and Yonai Nine Six Seven Nine Two.
Samantha Decord, uh, Maile resident.
Malia Auguste, Nanakuli Avenue.
Wana Tector Malka, Sixth Road, Nanakuli.
Hello, everybody. My name is Edward Hano Hano. I come from British Kano.
Thank you, board members. My name is Jermaine Myers and I'm from Nanakuli Avenue, Wine Homestead. Let's start on Agenda Two A, the Honolulu Fire Department. Please come for it, for the report.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Matthew Lissis. I'm a engineer with Engine Twenty-Eight Second Platoon. These are the statistics for the month of June, two thousand twenty-three. We had eight brush fires, fourteen nuisance fires, one cooking fire, and five activated alarms. As far as medical emergencies, we had a hundred and twenty-three. We also had five motor vehicle collisions. And this month's fire safety tip is, uh, about grilling safety. Says to, uh, keep these tips in mind as you enjoy summer events and activities with your family and friends. Always use barbecue grills outside away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from siding and deck railings and out from under eaves and overhanging branches according to the manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas and keep starter fluid, lighters, and matches out of children's reach. Cook with caution, be alert, and stay at the grill while cooking. Never leave a hot barbecue unattended. Light a propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on the propane grill goes out, turn the grill and gas off and wait at least five minutes before relighting. Periodically remove grease or fat buildup in the tray below the grill so that it cannot be ignited by a hot grill. Let the coals completely cool before disposing in a metal container. Never empty coals directly into a trash can. Do not store or use a grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on an upper level of this, of the building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of buildings or garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions. Vapors leaked indoors can easily be ignited by pilot lights or electrical equipment causing an explosion. That's all I got for today. Is there any questions?
Thank you. And board members, do any of you have any questions or comments? None of the board members? Anyone in the community in person, do you have any comments or questions? You can go ahead to the mic, please.
Hi, my name is Ednan. Uh, my question is in two parts. One is addressed to the most senior, um, firefighter among this group. And the question would be, um, in your career, have you ever responded to a school fire during school hours when a building was on fire? And the reason why I'm asking that is in today's age and the cost to maintain a fire alarm system in a school is quite costly. Has that fire alarm outlived its usage? I remember at one time it was needed when we had a lot of wood in buildings and a lot of these buildings was not up to code. But in today's two thousand and twenty-three, with many mobiles among us in just in this room, cannot app from the, from the office be used to notify students, teachers, and staff that be more effective way. Because in two thousand nineteen Valentine's Day, Parkland, Florida, I don't know how true this is, but they said Shooter Cruz, when he arrived at the school, the, the hallways was empty. He activated the fire alarm and like what children are taught from the time of kindergarten. I talked to students right there, you rush out of the room. So did he use that as a tool to slaughter students? So I'm wondering, restating my question to the most senior firefighter, how many times have you reported to a fire on campus during school hours? And, and to the, to the, to the room, has the firefighter alarms in school outlived its usage?
Sir, we don't answer your questions, just the person giving the report. Thank you. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Captain Keithito, uh, Engine Twenty-Eight Second Watch. So that's a really big question, um, for me to, so I'll answer your first question. I haven't ever responded personally to a burning school while kids are in session. I know what you're talking about. Talking about the old days when you would oil the floors and stuff like that with, with linseed oil and then the thing was cat. Yes, back in the seventies and the thing was really, um, volatile. I haven't, that was back in the day. Um, I have never responded to that. As you're talking about, has the, has our alarm system outlived its usage? I don't know. I cannot answer that. Um, that would be for higher than my level for sure. And I would also, it would take a lot of research. It, it wouldn't be a knee-jerk, uh, answer that I, I would give today. It wouldn't do any, you wouldn't do your question unfairly and, uh, justly. But I will bring it up and then hopefully within the next board meeting or the one after that, I'll have a more in-depth answer from someone else besides me. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room have any questions for HPD? Thank you, Mr. Renner.
Hello, Chair, Vice Chair, and the beautiful faces of the Neighborhood Board. Good to see new faces here today. My name is Ed Warner from Nanakuli, longtime resident, um, sixty-something years I live in the community. Um, I just want to thank each, um, Honolulu, the first responders, Honolulu Fire Department on their good work that they do. I know there were a, a crash that happened a couple of weeks ago, uh, right by my home, right after that raised crosswalks. I think it was an impaired driver, if I'm not mistaken, she went in. But it's, it was terrible. Um, if it wasn't for that raised crosswalks that we and the community fought for a long time, we'd, um, when Stacy was our representative and now it's Darris and Darris continuing to do the same thing. Um, if it wasn't for that raised crosswalks, I think it could have been fatality. That's how bad it was. So the car that was coming over was, I think was like little after six. And now we got that raised crosswalk there. It's a big safety, um, it was put up basically for save lives. It's a safety thing there. And I can't see anybody going against them. I think we need more in a community, uh, more in our community. But yeah, uh, you know, I, I stop by the station once in a while, I talk to the brothers. And you know, I try and see if, you know, if they need anything. You know, I brought this issue up for them about, um, synchronizing the lights, you know, for them come down. If, if we can work on that and at least put a resolution out there for them. And you know, they, they put their life on the line and, and at least we can do is help, help them, meet them halfway and give them the resources that they need. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? Thank you. Thank you, Honolulu Fire Department. We appreciate all of you. Thank you so much. Oh, wait, wait. Sorry, I forgot. Virtual. Yes, so I do have a question from, uh, someone on virtual has a question. Um, she'll come up on the screen. Salsido. Salsido, would please ask your question. Unmute your mic and ask your question.
Okay. You know, when you're talking about the fire, uh, drill in the schools, that is the responsibility. The school is a state function, okay? So that needs to be brought up to our, uh, legislature in that certain district. You know, it's a state function. They're supposed to have maintenance. That's what the money is there. And there's the, so the number one priority was supposed to protect our kids. If the state were not on a behalf to make sure our, our children and grandchildren is safe, then we're in trouble because we putting our, you know, their lives in their hands and it's mandated that we have to send our kids to school or grandchildren. Okay? So there should be mandated for them to maintain under the state level. So I believe, uh, perhaps in legislatures, you can hear this. Take things seriously. Our district has been re-elected for years. This is not a dog and pony show. Do your diligent responsibility and stop compromising the safety of all being of the community or our children in school. That's all I have to say. Mahalo.
Thank you. Do you have anything to say? Anybody else? Okay, that's it. Thank you now. Thank you so much. So at this time, we're gonna move on, board members, to our Agenda Two B, Honolulu Police Department. Corporal Pagan.
Good evening, board members, members of the community, Corporal Pagan with the Honolulu Police Department, District Eight Community Policing Team. I have your crime stats for June. Uh, in June, we had thirty-seven motor vehicle thefts, six in our area, twenty-three motor, uh, twenty-three burglaries, three in our area, a hundred thirty-four thefts, fourteen in our area, twenty-eight unauthorized entries into a motor vehicle, uh, two in our area. Uh, there was a total of a hundred thirty-nine citations issued. Um, there's a total of eight thousand four hundred eight calls for service, one thousand thirty-six in our community. Uh, two things that I did want to mention to the community to, to mark on your calendar, um, on August eighteenth, from nine to twelve, we're gonna be doing a coffee with a cop at the Starbucks at the Yonai Mall. Um, come down, join, enjoy a free cup of coffee and talk story with the policeman over there. No agendas, no, no speeches, uh, just an opportunity to talk story about whatever you guys want to talk story about. And then as of right now, on September second, um, I believe they're planning from ten to two. Um, Starbucks is working on a national night out type of event. Um, it's gonna be there today, so it's gonna be a national day out, I guess. Um, and they're looking to contact first responders and other people in the community to actually do, uh, a community event at the Yonai Mall as well. Um, we'll keep you guys posted as far as any more information that comes up for that. And at this time, I'm open for any comments, questions, concern, and even compliments.
Thank you, Corporal Pagan. Um, I would like to encourage all the community members, if you've never been to a coffee and cup, it's really, really awesome. You get to meet the people that risked their lives for us and they're just really, they're just wonderful people to get to know. Okay. So board members, does anyone have any questions or comments for Honolulu Police Department? Uh, Board Member Paul?
Can we have one at Nanakuli McDonald's then?
Speaking. Um, we, we do try to plan one at least once a quarter. Um, we do have a lot of people asking us to hold one in their area. So we're trying to see what we can do as far as providing one more often than just once a quarter. So we'll free coffee and we'll let you know.
Any other board members have any questions or comments? Oh, sorry, Paul, did you have another?
I can arrange that with McDonald's. I can do that half.
So we'll talk to you later about it. We don't, we don't overbook ourselves.
Thank you. Now the community members in our room, does anyone have? Go ahead.
Good evening, ma'am, ma'am Chair, board members. Very nice to see all the new faces over here today. My name is James. I'm from Miley. And I have a question about, do you know what went down today on Calcomata Street this afternoon? They had, um, all kinds of police officers flying past my house on Saint Don's Road. They went down, opened their trunk, put on their vest, brought out their rifles and had something going on down at them, almost where the chicken fight used to be.
I, I understand. I, they didn't call us, but I still know what was going on, so I don't know if there was a right down the road.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room? And remember to speak in the mic so people on virtual can hear us. Anyone else in the room? Okay, on virtual, I understand we, oh, okay, go ahead, sir.
Corporal Pagan. Oh, there's another one, sorry.
Hi, thank you. Uh, my name is Ednan. And the question I have is more like a request for, um, Police Chief, um, Arthur Logan. Um, it's been roughly about seventy-eight days since May first, the Honolulu Concealed Carry Sensitive Locations, um, Bill has been made law. And my request to him is, is it possible that Chief Logan, you can release the number of concealed carry permits that have been granted in our nine six seven nine two community and make it part of the monthly, um, Honolulu Police Department's, um, um, report? You know, is it three? Is it three hundred? No, three, you know, I, I would like to know. I don't know if anybody else in the room would like to know. But, um, being that there are so many, um, um, shooting occasions in this last third, no, ninety days, um, maybe there would be, um, some information the public would like to know.
I'll go ahead and, and then forward that question. Uh, my understanding is though they would not tell you exactly where people have their permits at. They'll tell you how many were issued, but they're not gonna tell you what district because the last thing you wanna do is tell people where all the guns are. Um, but I did wanna adjust something real quick about your question about the fire alarm. So I believe it is a federal requirement that there is fire alarms in the schools. Um, in regards to, um, active threat, active shooters with the schools with the fire alarm, that is something that we talk to the schools and the businesses when we do a presentation about, um, you know, to be totally honest, at one time I did suggest that they pull the alarm until we talked about it. We did some, uh, scenarios, actually talked to some other people and they realized that that's really not a good option. Um, you know, but then again, on the other side, you know, honestly, if everybody were to say, what did you do? What would you do when the alarm, fire alarm was going off? Most people would say I'd sit there, wait till somebody yelled at me that there's an actual fire. People don't tend to run off, but, um, as far as the fire alarms, like I said, I believe it's a federal requirement that there are fire alarms in schools and public buildings or something.
Thank you. Anyone else in the room before I move to virtual? Thank you, Mr. Renner.
Everybody always seeing the same face up here. Uh, Ed Warner again, yeah? Hey, I just wanna, um, you know, give a big thanks to HPD, a lot of stuffs that, you know, I get to do for our community right here in Nanakuli, whether it's bringing sobriety checkpoints, wait, sign waving, um, having them come and, you know, slowing down the cars. I mean, you know, you know, people criticize, you know, things that HPD do, but you know what? They're out there serving and protecting us. I mean, at least we can do is, you know, you see them, tell them hi. Like Paul, I can go to McDonald's, maybe we can get that somehow fixed. And, and you know, and, and that's a good thing what Paul trying to do. And I just wanted to see if I could, you know, be a, be a service to Paul on the safety side. You know, if, if, you know, whatever I can do and to help out this board. I mean, I would appreciate that. And you know, I give a clap to HPD because they're out there serving and protecting us. And all at least we can do is when you see them, tell them hi. You know, that might prevent you from getting one speeding ticket, but I mean, eh, you just say, what it is is, you know, we live on an island that is Allah and that's what we need to bring for, you know, with everything happening, you know, the, the killing going on right in our backyard, you know, with our homeless with mental health. There's a big, it's, it's a big thing. And not one, not the state can solve them by itself, not the city, not even HPD. But we, we need, you know, it starts from in the house. We need to, when, when, when you raise your kids, you can spoil your grandkids. When you spoil your kids, most of the time we're gonna be raising our grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Renner. That is really important for everyone to understand. Go ahead. Aloha, Rviela Kilie Benavides, resident, six-year-old. Um, I have a question and maybe comment or, you know, to the police officers. Um, with graduation summer among us, I don't know if everyone is aware, and I stumbled upon it by researching underage drinking, sixteen years old. And what I read was if they're with their parents and the parents buy the alcohol, correct me if I'm wrong, that it's okay for them to consume the alcohol, but when they leave the party, then they have to leave with the parents. So I'm not sure how many of you know about that. And so with that being said, because there's a lot of underage drinking, Hawaii, aunties, uncles partying, give them, give them the beer, give them the omole. And so that's contributing to all the traffic accidents, the major accidents as well. And so highly recommend parents, if you're one of them that contributing and giving the alcohol to your underage child, nephew, student, please keep them with you. Keep them there with you. Don't let them get behind the wheel. Um, but I stand to be corrected because that's what I read. And I was like, what the heck? No wonder there's so much drinking going on underage, sixteen years.
Thank you for your question. Um, there's nothing that says that it is legal for a parent to give their child alcohol. Um, a parent giving their child alcohol, the parent can actually be arrested for endangering the welfare of a minor. Um, so it is illegal in that sense. Um, however, HPD is not in the habit of teaching people how to parent. So if they're in their home and they're doing that, then again, it's, it's what they, what they deal with. However, it is important for you to understand that if you have a party at your house and a parent brings their child and they allow them to drink, when they leave that party, when they leave your home and something happens, you as the host of that party can be sued and can be liable because we're under the no-host liability law. Because whether you provided the alcohol there or you provided just a venue and someone had alcohol, um, you can be held liable. So if you do have a party at your house, a graduation party, and you have alcohol for the adults, kids go and sneak the alcohol, somebody gets hurt, you can be liable. Um, so there, if, if, if it says that it's legal for parents to give alcohol to their children, no, it's not. So I don't, I don't know where that was, where you might have saw that.
So in the report, it doesn't say it's legal, but it does say that a parent, um, sixteen years and older, it's okay for them to purchase the alcohol. They can consume the alcohol with the adult, but when the parent leaves, whatever venue, whatever place they're at, party, whatever you, maybe the child must leave with the parent.
Yeah, because Hawaii's law does say that it is illegal to purchase alcohol for anyone under twenty-one. So whether it's a child or not, it is illegal to do that. So if you're purchasing alcohol and you're giving it to your child, you still can be arrested.
So now I'm gonna move on to those on virtual and we only have one person with question, uh, Kale Salsido. Kale?
Aloha, this is all state Austin. Uh, Corporal Pagan, uh, your interpretation, I noticed there's on the media, we've been watching, there's a lot of, uh, animal abuse that's occurring on our shoreline area on a coast, on our coast beaches and abundance of animals being abused, which is not good. And then the abundance of animals within the homeless encampments as well too, abundance of them, like San Island. In your interpretation, what would give aid to HPD and Hawaiian Humane Society, which is overburdened like HPD is, to overcome the obstacles of this, uh, with our parks? There's no parks that allows animals to be especially unleashed or a couple, one guy with ten dogs. Like while we're, we're having over a chaos and all, all along our shoreline, what would give the tools to give aid to HPD? Because there is Keila, I seen on the news media that he's gonna spearhead, navigate for the protection of, uh, animal abuse. That's my question.
Uh, thanks for your question, Austin. Um, in regards to animal abuse, um, well, first of all, with the, with the animals and the homeless community and the parks and stuff like that, we do issue citations, we do issue, uh, for unle- we do issue citations, we do issue for unleashed dogs as well as for when we go out with the humane society, if the dogs are not chipped. So people can be cited. In fact, we're just out at Kahai Point today, dealing with a couple of people there. There are laws that are on the books, so we don't need any more laws. Again, my comment remains the same with that is, is if there's no punishment for the laws and the citations that we are being issued, the behavior is not going to change. So it's looking to talk to your legislators about talking to the judges and the prosecutors to start punishing the people that are violating these crimes and getting these citations and being arrested so that they're held accountable just as much as everyone else is that is concerned about getting a citation. You know, one of the issues that we do have with our homeless community is, and I'm not just saying with them, it's with anybody. If you don't, if you don't, if you're not concerned about getting a citation and you're not concerned about getting arrested, you're not going to change your behavior. Because if you get a citation and you go to, of course, you pay it, or you get a citation, you don't pay it, you wait for a warrant and you're willing to get arrested for it, you know, whenever you get arrested and then you go to jail and you get released and you don't care about that, then you're not going to change the behavior. So humane society is overwhelmed. My understanding is they're still working on staffing the Ever Beach, the new Ever Beach Humane Society office area. But other than just people reporting what they see and, you know, like you said, they see something, say something. Yeah, I believe we did do a cruelty to animal sign waving, someone held one just recently in the Nanakuli area as well, but it's just a matter of reporting whatever you see.
I think that's the problem on our area because Sergeant Fumi also gave last month a citation to a gentleman, a couple. And with about eight dogs. And there's a leash law, we ain't going to reinvent the wheel. There's a leash law in a microchip. And the leash law is a leash into a person's hand. But more so if the park is not authorizing for any type of animals on the park. Now this repeated offenders now, how will our legislatures, are they gonna, our state legislatures, they're going to increase the fines for prosecutors to prosecute? And if they cannot, they're going to be repeated offenders again. So they're going to have to increase the fines, increase the penalties of this enhanced repeated offenders, especially on our coastline. Maybe that will deter this bad behavior that's occurring right now on our west coast, on Waianae Coast. Do you agree?
Again, I don't necessarily feel that the fines have to be increased, but if someone doesn't pay it, there has to be some type of punishment or some type of action that's being taken if they are being, if they are violating the law. You know, I don't want to just say it's on the west side, you know, it happens all over the island. You know, a lot of the homeless that do have these animals, you know, whether they're certified or not, they are considered, well, they consider them comfort animals. They consider them security animals. So when they leave their area, their animals are taken care of, their property. So there's reasons that they have them. Yes, I do understand that it is illegal and I still agree that they have to follow the laws like everyone else, but you know, it's important that we just hold everybody accountable to the same laws and we we enforce them the same way.
Thank you. Now move on to our, Kalae Salsido, we're going to now move on to our next agenda item. Thank you for your questions. Thank you, Corporal Pagan. Thank you. Okay, board members, we're going to now go on to agenda number three. Filling of the vacancy of the one-at-large board member vacancy. Board members, according to the rules, we must, board members must nominate any individual that you're interested in nominating for the vacancy. And if any of the public would like, any community member wants to be nominated because they are interested in the vacancy, it must be nominated by a board member. Okay? So now proceeding, board members, do I have any nominations? Samantha, board member Samantha?
I would like to nominate David Corona.
Board member Paul?
I'd like to nominate James.
Any other board members? Any other board members? Any committee, community member in the room that is living within our district? Miley Nanakuli, Nanakuli, Miley District, Neighborhood Board District, are you interested in the vacancy? Okay, thank you. Nominations are now closed. So now I'd like to ask David Cowell, I'm sorry, James Cowell and David Corona to please come to the microphone. I'll give each of you one minute to share with the board members why you would like to serve on the board. Okay, starting with David.
Good evening, board. My name is David Corona. I'm a Maile residence. I've been my resident for about twenty-seven, twenty-eight years. Been coming to the board for several years now. And I think that my time, the time that I gave to the Neighborhood Board in providing feedback, providing testimony, providing my my opinion on matters. What I do is I like to, you know, look at the material, read the material, understand the material, and give good constructive feedback to the board. And it's not based on my personal opinion, it's based upon what I think that the community is looking for. So I think it's important to be aware of the material. So I can guarantee you this. If you elect me to come on your board, you're going to get a hundred percent out of me. You're going to get some agreement out of me and we're going to disagree on things. But the moment the gavel is hit to start the meeting and the gavel is hit to end the meeting, you're going to get a hundred percent out of me. And when the meeting is done, then we go back to being who we are. But we're going to be constructive, we're going to provide good feedback, and I think I can bring that to the board. So thank you for your consideration and nomination. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corona. Mr. Cowells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll bring this down a little bit. Good evening, everybody. As everybody knows, my name is James Cowells. I live Saint John's Road, Miley. I'm a Marine Corps veteran. I have served on this board, Nanakuli Board, before. And I've also served on the Waianae Neighborhood Board. My specialty is transportation. I'm a forty-year, forty-two-year truck driver. No speeding tickets. You can check on that. No accidents for forty-two years. To me, that's pretty good. And I know there's a lot of issues out this side, Miley, Nanakuli, that needs to be fixed. And I'm willing to sit on this board to help fix those issues. And I'm willing to put myself out there. I'm not one for makeup speech, big speech to anybody, but I will put myself out there. And there's one thing I also fell into is the homeless. I literally fell into that with one of my family members became homeless. And for this past couple of weeks, it's been a whirlwind with that. But I'm willing to help out with that any way I can. Thank you for considering me and I appreciate it.
Mahalo, mahalo, Mr. Corona and mahalo, Mr. Cowells. Board members, our Neighborhood Board Assistant partner will do a roll call. Wait. Oh, okay. We're going to do a quick recess. He's got to vet their addresses to make sure they qualify. Anybody can rest around? Excuse me, we have refreshments on the table. Board member Paul had brought refreshments. Please help yourselves. Everyone in the room? Board member Paul brought some refreshments. Please help yourselves. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Neighborhood Assistant is, are both of our nominees. Okay. So board members, you're, each of you have only one vote. And you're going to name the last name, either Cowells or Corona of the individual that you're voting for. Again, either Corona or Cowells. You can only get one vote. So our Neighborhood Assistant will call your name. And then you're just going to say into the microphone clearly, you're going to say Corona or Cowells to cast your vote.
Okay, thank you. Member IO, your vote?
Cowells.
Member? Mihaano? Augustine?
Corona.
Okay. Member Tector?
I abstain.
Okay. Member Decort?
Corona.
Okay. Member Ed Hano Hano?
Cowells.
Member Kaya is not. Oh, there she is. Member Kaya, your vote for, to fill the vacancy?
James Cowells.
Okay. And Chairperson Myers, your vote?
Corona.
Okay. At this time, neither candidate received quorum vote, so we're going to do this one more time. If any board members would like to change their vote, they can do so, or if either candidate would like to step down, they can also do that at this time before we run through the election again. Okay, here we go. Member IO?
Cowells.
Member Augustine?
Corona.
Member Tector?
Again, I abstain.
Okay, thank you. Member Decort?
Corona.
Okay. Member Kaya?
Cowells.
Okay. Member Ed Hano Hano?
Cowells.
Member Naomi Hano Hano? Okay, and then Chairperson Myers?
Corona.
Okay, vote remains the same. Once again, neither candidate received quorum vote, so the seat will stay vacant and will be again posted on the next meeting agenda.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, before I even, if you move forward, cast a vote to change my mind, I have a question for both of them. In the years that you've served or the term that you've served, what have you changed that made a difference within our community? And you can give one example that may persuade my vote. Because I honestly don't know both of you, but I know you from a friend of a friend. And that's my only reason for abstaining. So unless you make me understand that my passion is for the children, kupuna, and my neighborhood. So, Mr. Corona, please.
Thanks for the opportunity to let me explain myself better. So I always served on the board for a short period of time, but I filled a vacancy from the last session of the Neighborhood Board. But I've been coming to the board for a very long time now. I'd say a very long time, six, seven years, maybe a little longer than that, maybe. But, but one of the biggest things that I think I did is I worked with my legislatures and the City Council. And the one biggest thing I did with the City Council was my Maile residence, Kualapuni Street. I noticed that there was a lot of issues with Kualapuni. Got a nice elementary school there. But I noticed that we have no sidewalks. We had no good signage for school crossings. We had no good crosswalks there. A lot of the signs that were for speed limit signs weren't there. So I worked with Councilor Tufola and we fixed the road. We now have school crossing signs there. We got better painted sidewalks. We got, on my sidewalks, the crosswalks. We've got better crosswalks down by Saint John's now. We got some tree removals. The speed limit signs are fixed. So that's one of my accomplishments. And, and I always participate in the NPC food distributions, which we have another one this coming weekend. So I'm always doing the food distribution. So I'm pretty active in the community. I'm always talking to legislature behind closed, behind the scenes, but I'm always talking to them and trying to do things for the community and get things out there. So I think I'm pretty active. Thank you.
It's a very good question. Very good. My time on the board, the last time I was here on the board was, like I said, transportation. I have, in this past time around, just recently, I have had issues with some houseless not getting help. And I was able to facilitate some responses from some of the organizations to help these houseless people get off the beach. And today, thanks to Darius, with his help and my help, we got a houseless person housing in the Barra's Point area, Barra's Point Transitional Housing over there. Just today. And I, I've been going to the beaches, the beach parks to help feed the houseless. I'm not going to call them homeless, the houseless. And a lot of them were kids. And that really, really tore me up when I go to these parks and I see these kids, they're hungry. So that's why I've been, we've been going to the parks and help feed them. And that's the only, I just thinking, maybe that's the only possible time that they're going to get some food to eat. And being a chair, the last time I was here, being a chair of the transportation, I was pushing to get the turn, the left-hand turn signal light at Kalikamana and Ferentzton Highway. And I noticed today they started working on getting that. So to me, that gave me a good feeling that I helped. And a lot of people were complaining because they didn't have, that was the only street that didn't have a left turn lane, a left turn light. And I was happy that they started working on construction on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Board member?
Okay, I will cast my vote now for Corona.
Voting for Corona?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that's still, okay. So now we have, based on that vote, we have a four-four tie. So again, no gentleman reaches quorum vote, the seat stays vacant.
Okay. Thank you. So we're going to proceed. We're not going to fill the vacancy at this tonight, but we're going to try again at the next month's meeting. Okay? And so I'd like to thank both of the nominees. As you can see, it's a very hard discussion for board members. Both of you are worthy. At some point, we'll have to make a final decision. Okay? So thank you, and I hope you come again next month. And I hope our board will determine who's going to fill the vacancy at that time.
Chairperson?
We don't have a motion right now. We're going to have to move on to the next one.
Oh, no, it's not a motion, a suggestion only. It's not a motion.
We're going to move on right now because we've already, this has to do with the agenda. We're going to move on. We're gonna move on. Mahalo. Okay, so now we're gonna move on to the elections of the officers. We're gonna start off with the chair. Uh, position for the chair. Um, first of all, I'm gonna ask for nominations, and then just know that board members, you can self-nominate if you're interested. So board members, do I have any nominations for the chair position? Paul?
Chair, uh, Mrs. Hano Hano? Mrs., Mrs. Hano Hano?
Any other nominees?
Samantha Decort.
Thank you. Any other nominees? Thank you, board members. We have two nominees, and sitting at the table, now, um, is Samantha Decort and Naomi Hano Hano. I'm gonna ask both of you to share one minute, um, why you'd like, uh, you would like to be the chair of the board. Uh, starting with Naomi?
Well, I just wanna serve the community here, and, um, yeah, I, I have some experience with neighborhood boards, so, um, wha- whatever the board would like.
Um, Samantha?
Aloha, um, I am looking forward to serving on the board in any capacity, uh, whether that be board member, whether that be officer. Uh, I do feel that I have the leadership qualities, uh, to lead this board into finding effective solutions for our community. Uh, I currently, uh, work at the Hawaii State Legislature, so I have background and experience on how to get things done through legislation. Also, I have served, um, with our council member as a community liaison, so I also have city experience as well, so I understand how the process goes. Uh, I have the time to dedicate, uh, to serve my community, um, and to work with, uh, whether that be our, um, elected officials, our, uh, organizations, and most importantly, our community members, where I believe that it's important that our community members be heard, and that there's follow-through, because sometimes, um, we will be the only person that they are able to talk to, so I believe it's my kuliana to take that, whether I see them again, whether I don't, but to take that and push that, um, forward to, uh, solution and to results as working with our government officials and, uh, those that are in those leadership positions.
Thank you, board member Samantha. Okay, we're gonna proceed to the voting, board members. We have two nominees, Hano Hano and Decort. And similar to the last, um, voting, our Neighborhood Assistant partner, he will roll call, and then you are to either name Hano Hano or Decort as your vote. Partner?
Thank you. Member IO?
Hano Hano.
Member Augustine?
Decort.
Member Tector?
Decort.
Okay. Member Decort?
Decort.
Member Kaya?
Decort.
Member Ed Hano Hano?
Hano Hano.
Member Naomi Hano Hano? And Chair Protem, your vote?
Decort.
Okay, thank you. With a vote of five to three, Samantha, you are now the Chair of the Nanookuli Neighborhood Board.
Congratulations to Samantha. We're gonna now take a short recess as we switch seats, and she's gonna carry on with the rest of the agenda items.
We are back and moving on to our next agenda item. Uh, we are going to be taking nominations for Vice Chair. Uh, at this time, board members, do I have any nominations for Vice Chair? Oh, Uncle Paul?
Hano for Vice Chair. Ask Mrs. Hano Hano.
Okay. Naomi Hano Hano, we have a nomination. Do we have any other nomination, board members, for Vice Chair? Seeing none? Okay?
Okay, uh, board members, uh, in regards to this vote, since there is only a single candidate, if you're voting in favor, you can state her last name. If not, you can vote no or abstain. Uh, member IO?
Hano Hano.
Member Augustine?
Hano Hano.
Member Tector?
Hano Hano.
Member Kaya?
Hano Hano.
Member Myers?
Hano Hano.
Member Ed Hano Hano?
Hano Hano.
Member Hano Hano, uh, Naomi Hano Hano, excuse me. Okay, and Chair, your vote?
Naomi Hano Hano.
Okay, mahalo, Naomi, you are now the Vice Chair for the Nanookuli Neighborhood Board.
Okay, uh, next up, uh, we are gonna be voting for Secretary. Uh, so at this time, board members, if you have any nominations for Secretary? Uncle Paul?
Um, it slipped my mind, Jermaine Myers, Secretary.
Uncle Paul, I'm not interested. Thank you, I'm not interested.
Uh, I would like to make a nomination.
I'd like to nominate. Uh, thank you, I'm not interested, Uncle Paul, but I'd like to nominate, nominate Malia.
Okay, uh, Malia Augustine, do I have any nominations, any other nominations for Secretary? No? Seeing none? Okay, partner will take the roll call.
Okay, once again, uh, you can be stating the board member's name, Augustine, or no, or abstain. Member IO?
Augustine.
Member Augustine?
Augustine.
Member Tector?
Augustine.
Member Kaya?
Augustine.
Member Myers?
Augustine.
Member Ed Hano Hano?
Augustine.
Member Naomi Hano Hano?
Augustine.
And Chair?
Augustine.
Okay, thank you, Malia, you are now the Secretary for the Nanookuli Neighborhood Board.
Okay, moving on to Treasurer, we are taking nominations for Treasurer. Board members, any nominations?
Chair? I'd like to nominate, um, Kainoa Kaya.
Okay, Kainoa Kaya. Do we have any, any other nominations for Treasurer? Okay, seeing none, we'll take the roll call.
Thank you. Uh, board members, again, stating, if you're in favor, stating the last name Kaya. If not, you can vote no or abstain. Member IO?
Kaya.
Member Augustine?
Kaya.
Member Tector?
Kaya.
Member Kaya?
Kaya.
Member Myers?
Kaya.
Member Ed Hano Hano?
Kaya.
Member Naomi Hano Hano? Okay, and Chair, your vote?
Kaya.
Okay, thank you, Kainoa, you are now the Treasurer for the Nanookuli Neighborhood Board.
Great, awesome, congratulations, officers. Uh, moving on to our next agenda item, Mayor's Rep?
I'd like to, sorry, excuse me, Chair. I'd like to also make a motion for a Sergeant at Arms on our board.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor for Sergeant at Arms? So the motion is to add to the agenda? Okay. So... Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to add Sergeant at Arms to the agenda. Uh, the motion was made by Board Member Augustine, seconded by Board Member Tector. Take a vote?
Okay, in regards to this motion, uh, board members, you're, you can vote yes in favor of the motion to add Sergeant at Arms, no to not add the item, or abstain. Uh, member IO?
Four.
Member Augustine?
Yes.
Member Tector?
Yes.
Member Kaya?
Yes.
Member Myers?
Abstain.
Member Ed Hano Hano?
Yes.
Member Naomi Hano Hano?
Yes.
Okay, and Chair? Okay? Agenda item has now been added for election of officers, which would be considered Item 4E, Sergeant at Arms. And Chair can seek any nomination.
Okay, uh, so, uh, nominations are open for Sergeant at Arms. Board members, any nominations? Uh, Board Member Tech, uh, Board Member Augustine?
I would like to nominate Ed Hano Hano.
Okay, uh, Board Member Ed Hano Hano? Do I have any other nominations for Sergeant at Arms? Okay, Board Member Naomi Hano Hano?
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mapuana Tector.
Okay, Board Member Mapuana Tector, we have two nominations. Board members, do we have any other nominations for Sergeant at Arms? Seeing none? Nominations are Board Member Mapuana Tector, Board Member Ed Hano Hano. I'll give it over to partner to take the roll call.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Uh, member IO, your vote?
Mapuana.
Member Augustine?
Hano Hano.
Member Tector?
Hano Hano.
Member Kaya?
Hano Hano.
Member Myers?
Tector.
Member Ed Hano Hano?
Tector.
Yeah. Member Naomi Hano Hano?
Tector.
And Chair, your vote?
Tector.
Okay, Mapuana, you are now the Sergeant at Arms for the Nanookuli Neighborhood Board.
Okay, congratulations. Ooh. Got you out of that one. All right. Okay, ready, uh, we're moving forward now, uh, Mayor's Rep. Uh, I believe we have Erwin. Thank you, Erwin. Go ahead.
Congratulations, officers, and, uh, good evening, board members and everyone in the community. Erwin Koata with the Board of Water Supply. For the Mayor's rep, I submitted a report, as well as the board's report, Board of Water Supply's report. I do have extra copies here on the table for those who would like one. I do have one important announcement. There is a handout here, the Board of Water Supply is proposing to raise its water rates for the next five years, starting in twenty twenty-four up through twenty twenty-nine. We will be holding three community meetings to get feedback. Um, the rates are currently, or the proposed rates are currently, the changes are being finalized. They will be available on our website at boardofwatersupply.com by the end of the week. Um, so, uh, come out and, you know, uh, we are having these community meetings in August. Come out and, uh, give us your feedback. We also are available to, uh, come to the neighborhood boards to present uh, on the proposed rates, um, answer any questions, any community members who would like to arrange any kind of special, um, gathering to kind of talk about these rates. We're also available to do that through all of August and September. Uh, we will have also a phone number if you have questions. We have an email address where you can email us your comments on the rates itself. So, um, that is an important announcement. Please come out and give us your feedback about these rates. Um, we do realize that, um, this is not, it's never a good time to raise rates. Uh, as we all know, we are all have challenges, so does the board. We'd like to explain to you why we're proposing these rates, and hopefully get your support. But in the meantime, um, we are open to get your feedback, and we do wanna hear from you about these proposed rates. Happy to take any questions.
Okay, uh, regarding Board of Water Supply, do I have any questions, board members? Uh, Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. Um, what is the deadline for the input before you, they're gonna, you be making a decision?
Um, we are currently, um, wanna get some feedback through September. Uh, what's gonna happen after that is we're gonna forward all of the feedback to our board, and we will make, uh, the board will make a decision on it um, by the October or November, mostly by the November timeframe. And, uh, the goal is to get these rates, uh, put into effect starting January first, twenty twenty-four, up through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine, so it's a five-year rate program. Yeah, so the board has to really make this decision by, I would say the November, by our November board meeting, they would have to make this decision.
Okay. I have, um, a concern. We've had, had access at the board before about Board of Water Supply separating the meter, and because we pay, our Board of Water, I'm sorry, our water bill includes wastewater.
Right.
And wastewater assumes that everything that comes out of our pipe is being used, is flushed down the toilet, right? But that's not the case. We all have hoses outside.
Right.
And so when we use the water in our yard, that, or, you know, not in our drain, um, in our house drains, in our kitchen, or in our restroom, that is going into the yard, it's not adding to the wastewater. So it's been a concern by this board from when I started in twenty seventeen, that we've asked Chris Sukimoto to, you know, take to, back to the board, that we want you guys to start separating the meters. Now Spectrum has come, and they've upgraded to, from four G to five G, actually from three G to four G, five G. They made that effort. So I'm hoping that the city, county will make that effort to separate the meters so that we don't get overcharged for using the wastewater, right?
Right.
Um, so a slower cost for anything that we use for our hoses outside, because it's not going in the, you know, into the drain. Um, my other concern is that, you know, we just finished a pandemic. And, um, you know, I understand the city has infrastructure, but it's also the city that pushed behind doing the rail. And so I'm just concerned that everything in Hawaii is just going up and up, and at some point, our community members need to say, is it enough already? I mean, you are, as you know, the elected officials, the mayor, and et cetera, et cetera. You know, you're controlling our cost of living. And when we get things like this, when you're asking us to raise prices, raise the, um, you know, the car registration, raising all these different things, it's really affecting family members in our community. And so can you please take that seriously back and come back to next month's meeting and tell us, when are you guys gonna start separating the meters? So that we're not falsely charged for all the water that's going down into our yard? You know, we should have a lower rate for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, would you like to respond?
Uh, to the first question, uh, Board Member Meyer, that's a very fair question. It's been, uh, one that has come up many, 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 many times. There's a big difference between the wastewater rate and the water rate. Water rate is based on what you use, it goes through the meter. There's a big difference between the wastewater rate and the water rate. Water rate is based on what you use. It goes through the meter. Wastewater starts off with a basic charge. It's a very large basic charge. What supplements that is what goes through the meter, and that's a smaller fraction of the total bill, which wastewater is always the larger of the two bills. So it is a fair question, and it's one that we have been trying to deal with for a very long time. The second one with respect to rising costs is a fair question, too. We didn't come to this decision as far as the raising of the rates lightly. We knew it's going to be unpopular, and it is unpopular, fairly so. But at some point, though, we are reaching a point, we have for the last three years, even during the pandemic, tried to reduce our costs and tighten our belt. The problem is, we're getting to the point where if I tighten anymore, we're going to start to impact your level of service, yeah? Water pressure, ability to make sure we meet all the regulations. So it's this nasty balance, and believe me, we struggle with this a lot. We're still talking about, even this afternoon, we were talking about this. So it is on top of mind for us, but at some point, I've got to, we have to make this hard decision. And so come to the meeting, we'll explain to you this decision and give us your feedback. But we know off the top already, nobody wants increased prices. The cost of living is going up, water being part of it, including everything else. We're not taking this lightly, for sure.
I want you to go back and I want you to remind everyone at the Board of Water Supply, at the Mayor's Office, at City Council, you are not operating in a silo. You're not in a vacuum. So it's the city officials, like the Mayor and the City Council, that are making decisions regarding the budget. They are supposed to move money around in order to give you for the infrastructure. It shouldn't be adding on taxes, especially after we all witnessed all of our City Council members taking a raise. You know, when they're taking a raise and then they're asking us to raise our taxes, what's going on? You need to balance the budget, including the new rail, because that's all city infrastructure, and don't put any more kuliana on the community. Balance the budget, that's why we elected all of you. And it shouldn't be adding taxes every year. Oh, start, we're starting off with one department taxes, then Hiko, then this and that. We're community members and we want to live on this island. We, the, the sun is free, so the solar is coming from the sun. Ke'oukua gave us that. The water is free, it's coming from the Ke'oukua as well. It's just us have to do the infrastructure for it, but you guys got to balance it, and you guys got to stop coming back to the taxpayers year in and year out with all of these different, city county got to work together instead of in a silo. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Erwin. Please take that back. Thank you very much. So we'll go over to Board Member Tector. Do I have any questions on this side for Board of Water Supply? Because we'll go to Board Member Tector and then we'll open it up.
My question would be, in that process, how will you differentiate the percentage of rates? Be it a business, be it the golf course, be it residential, be it military, and businesses? So if even restaurants, if the capacity of water that's being utilized, we need to understand who you're going to ding as far as that total amount at the end result. Taxes will always go up no matter what, but in, having to make the general public understand where the rates are going to be tacked on, break it down to us, and that'll be very.
Break it down, yeah. We do have residential rates, non-residential, commercial rates, yes. And with respect to, you know, our operation, all of our operation is based on the water rates. We don't get revenue from real property tax. We don't get revenue from the state, yeah. So we get, all of our operations comes from water sales. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Erwin. At this time, I'm going to open it up to the community. If you have any questions, concerns, or comments, please come to the microphone. Online, please, name and.
Congratulations, Board, Chairman, Vice Chairman, all of you. Again, my name is Jonathan Homonavenui. I'm the chairman for the Wa'nei Board, new elected chairman. Now in Hawaii, all the watersheds are being diverted, putting in new valves at night, working on all these water places. They'll be acting like there's a water main break because they're working on it. Samantha, I don't think Hawaiian homes is part of this. Okay, but Auntie, you spoke right, Jermaine. Tector, you went down to the details, perfect. But the same thing Maui did. We need to follow that model. The Hawaiian homes people, we already getting priced out of Hawaii. We don't want that, Samantha. Just imagine how much power you get on this board right here. Just remember, Tommy Waters told us in that, when we were under oath, that we had a lot of power. We just don't know what the power is, but we do. And now that we have new leadership, and you're right, we're electing all these officials. We elect them, we certify them. But they're not qualified. They've become followers inside the system. There's no leadership. I speak on behalf of all the representatives. I just want to thank you guys for doing a great job, and it's nothing against Board of Water Supply. The thing is, we need to hit the nail with the hammer. And enough of this, enough is enough. I do stand for the same thing. We are here, we are the new Board. Our power is within the people. Take 95,000 of us, the whole Wa'nei Coast, we're going to walk to the Capitol and walk into these meetings. We need to stand and make a voice. All of you out there listening, please do help us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Homonavenui. Appreciate it. Please state your name.
Aloha, I'm Vila Kelly Benavides. You know, that's one thing, and this is probably the last process for any business. They come to the community and then they collect feedback. What justice is it to even have feedback if decisions are already made? You know, they're going to raise the water rates. I was watching So Little Program, and I stumbled upon it by just turning the channel, and I started listening, and it was yesterday or two days ago. Golf course was cheaper than the residential. And I looked, I was like, okay, what gives? Then I also seen another slideshow that Board of Water Supply was putting out, and then they also had waiver. Give the residents a waiver so we don't have to be charged all that outrageous prices that they were showing from $200 water bill to a $400 to a $500. I mean, please, give us a break. Not only that, be honest, not because you need that last portion to go ahead and continue on with your business proposal in raising the rates. Come, oh, I only came in here to go get feedback. What justice would it do? Will it serve any right? Will it stop? Will it stop you folks from raising the rates for us? Or will you guys just turn a blind eye? Just go ahead and lower the rates a little bit. Hey, big island, some residents are not paying for water. On Hawaiian homes said, why are we paying for water? You know what they were saying? Oh, you know what? You don't pay for water. You paying for the equipment that they need to come to go ahead and repair. Well, that's a bunch of bull. Not only that, 2017, 2016, 15, go look in the minutes. I also asked about that meter to separate sewage from water. You know what they told me? They told me, I have to pay for the meter. Okay, I was willing to pay for the sewage meter, so that way I know how much going to the sewage, how much going to the water. Then I said, if I go ahead and pay for that sewage meter, it belongs to me. They told me, no, it doesn't. It belongs to Board of Water Supply. So again, feedback, please be real with us.
Thank you, thank you, Auntie Ivy. Erwin, I just have a comment before we close this section. Oh, okay, online, we're going to get to you. Okay, we'll have Mr. Corona go first. Go ahead, please state your name for the record.
David Corona, my early resident, just a couple, just a couple of quick questions about this. For the Board of Water Supply, you mentioned in your, in the letter here that I just had a chance to read that you, in the Mayor's Report, which we haven't gotten to yet, correct? So is that you receive no appropriation from property taxes from the City Council? So can you just tell me how the Board of Water Supply gets its revenue? And then also, other than you making determination you need to increase rates, is it a public utility commission? Or is it some type of commission that approves the increase, or is it just Board of Water Supply that says, yeah, we're going to raise your rates? Those are two questions I had. Thank you. Thank you, Board.
Yeah, first, the rates is approved by our Board, our Board of Directors. So they make policy and they approve whether the rates are increased or not and by how much. Number two, with respect to the revenue, it comes from water sales. So all of the water, the water bills, all of those payments go towards, are collected, and then that is what we use to operate and maintain the water system. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and, oh, go ahead, please come to the microphone, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm a little bit confused. You mentioned Mayor's Rep, but I've been hearing a lot about Board of Water. Do I wait for Mayor's Rep or?
Please wait for Mayor's Rep. He's going to do the report right after this. Thank you.
So you let us, you'll let me know?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to go online. Auntie Kupoi, if you can unmute and state your name for the record, and you can ask your question or comment.
Okay. Aloha. Mahalo, Chair. Congratulations to all of you Board members. Thank you for coming, Mr. Koata, and for facing us. I appreciate it. And I do want to follow up on Jermaine's question as far as Jermaine and RV, or was it Mapuana, regarding the bill? Where we have our drinking water bill and then we have the sewer part of it. Is there anyone on Oahu that has separate meters?
Not to my knowledge. There's no separate water meter and a separate sewer meter.
So what was RV just referring to? As far as having a separate meter? So how does one know the difference between our intake and our expelling into the water treatment facility?
Yeah, the, the point there is that there's a certain amount of water that you use for drinking, you know, drinking use, and there's a certain amount of water that goes down the sewer system. So, you know, many people have, over time, talked about, talked about, or suggested that there be a separate meter that, that measures how much water goes into your property, and then the water that comes out and goes into the sewer system. And then measure those two different usages, and then, of course, charge accordingly, and have the ENV or Sewer Department regulate on the sewer side, and then the Board on the potable water manage the potable water side.
Okay, and again, thank you, because this feedback, like the previous speakers, community members had said, if we do want to engage with the BWS, whether it be with the Board or individual staffers like you that come out to us, how do we, how do we share our our displeasure with the increased rates or with what we feel is an inappropriate rate fee when a golf course has a lower rate fee than us commercial folks, I mean, excuse me, than us residents? Because that, again, that does not help the residents to stay here. You know, to have a golf course allows someone to have leisure and sport and health activities, but that does not, you know, allow them to continue to reside here. So how should we go about in expressing our displeasure and our suggestions to rectify what we find to be a problem?
First one is, we have a phone number, 808-748-5041. You can call. Number two, we have our, our general email address, contactus@hbws.org. You can email us. The Board also meets every month. It meets once a month, and it's, if it's an agenda item, I'll ask about putting this on the agenda item. They will take public comment. We do accept public comments at the Board, and you can address the Board in a three-minute, provide your comments. So provide it in writing. You can call us, or you can come to the Board meeting and offer your comments.
Okay, and again, if you could thank Chief Engineer, geez, and now I just forgot his name, Ernie.
Ernie Lau.
Yeah, you know, for continuing to, to raise the flag about Red Hill and how important the water is to us, and congratulate.
Yeah, that's important to us, yeah. Keeping that water clean for now and into the future, absolutely. And part of the challenge is, is the issues that the Red Hill situation is bringing on the department. So some of that is equated in here, too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mahalo, Chair.
Thank you. We're moving on to Salsedo. If you can unmute and state your name for the record.
Aloha. You know, as for the rates rising for our water, I want to ask you folks, why are you folks doing that to homeowners, landowners, okay, that's already paying taxes towards the city? Why don't you tax your guys homeless encapment on the beaches? That's getting the water free and that's using big water slides, thousands of water. They're using and running that water slide all day long, sometimes three or four. Before you look at the people that, who's honestly living and paying their water, their taxes, their land taxes, their rail taxes, those taxes is going to be for my grandchildren and future grandchildren to pay, not by choice, by force, by force. So I just want to say, the city park and state parks, they should be paying for water, too. You know, not looking at the people that's working hard, honest working, living people out there. Not the ones that's encapment that's getting the water free, who likes to turn around and bust your folks' pipes on the city parks, maintenance cannot fix it, and it's running all night until somebody come, you know? That is unjustified what you folks are doing. That's an fully unethical behavior of the city. Before you turn around, text the people that works very hard, you better think what you guys have on your guys' parks, maintenance sucks. Everything. And as for our mayor, you know, you guys get one raise, not even full term. They're not, you folks are not first responders. But you guys sure acting like first responders. Our first responders put their life on the line to protect our people. The water is fine, is very special. Akua gave it. You folks just took ownership of it. You guys can't even maintain our pipes that's broken, water pipes here, broken, everything broken. Stop making you folks self-rich. Think about the community. Think about the people, the suffering that they're going through. The city is overpricing, price gouging, pricing our people off of the island. Is that the intent of the city? Well, let me tell you, you got a lot of people will not go for that BS. That's what I have to say. My husband's got something else to say. Shame on you guys.
Thank you.
Chair.
Thank you for the comment.
And let's put this bridge together because it's affecting all the island right now. Let's go step back a bit. All those that was being involved with cesspool conversion, there was a Bill 7, City Bill 7, introduced back in 2020. It was, it was preventing of our public testimony. It was deprived of public testimony for this bill, Bill 7. March 18, 2020, introduced by City Council, Ikaika Anderson, before he left the office as City Council.
Never was heard.
This thing was never, it was denied public testimony. Our City Council right now, they gave themselves a raise, but this, if you have a septic system in place, and somehow, some way, sewer lines, city sewer line is coming through, you are required to get into this monopoly. Okay, so Nanoukuli Wa'nei Neighborhood Board needs to look at this and challenge this.
Uh, Austin, I'm going to ask you if you could just summarize your statement.
My statement, summarizing, we was unjustly denied the opportunity to provide testimony, fair testimony on Bill 7 on March 18, 2020. Our City Council needs to go move on this portion right here. This is not a topic of the wastewater itself, okay? This is not a topic of the wastewater itself, okay? So everybody's talking about the increase in prices of wastewater. This is the bottleneck that's gonna happen if you convert a septic system to now city sewer. Okay, that prevented us to hold within our system. So this has to be tested, this has to be.
Thank you.
Challenge, okay?
Thank you, Uncle. Thank you. Erwin, did you get all of that? Okay, great. We're gonna move on. Uh, Mayor's Rep? Erwin, that's you again. Uh, so go ahead.
Yeah, I submitted my report, uh, Chair, so if there's any questions, happy to take any questions.
Okay, perfect. Uh, Board members, uh, any questions with regards to Mayor's reports? Seeing none, we'll open it up to the community. Community, any questions? Uh, please come to the microphone, okay? State your name.
Hi, my name is Edmund. Um, I don't have a question, but, um, hopefully I'm allowed to give some editorial. Okay, I'm, um, I'm real disappointed with, uh, Mayor Benjerry. You know, um, he's so overwhelmed with fear of failure, he's doing nothing. He is doing nothing because he's so afraid to fail. I mean, you show his bullet points, right? Okay, real. No, it was even, you just happened to land when it was getting completed, right? You're talking about what, two pools? The white pool? This is the second time that thing needs to repair. I mean, come on, man, you're killing me. You're disappointing me so bad and I, you know, I, I cannot endure another four years of your failure to even step out of the, your cave to see if it's raining because you don't wanna get your hair wet. But you know what? You're bald like me, so you're not gonna get. Okay, um, sorry, thank you for that. That, I'll, I'll end with that.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, next community member, please come to the microphone, state your name.
Yeah, David Cronin, my Ely residence. Um, just some, uh, some of your follow-ups. And I, I know, Erwin, that you're just, you passed the information along to the appropriate department. Uh, for items five and six, uh, about cameras and response to DPR's request about, uh, misuse of parks. Um, and then, I'm sorry, item number four, um, about the liner for Waianae Golts was brought up. Um, but this, the, the response is pending a reply from the Environment, Environmental. Um, and I just find it hard that a month since the question was asked, it still says a pending from the Environmental when it's a pretty basic question. When was the liner installed? What was the lifespan? And what is the condition now? It's a pretty basic question. And to be told by the Environmental that we have to wait another month or maybe longer than that, just doesn't, doesn't seem acceptable. Could you pass it along, please? Yeah, and then, so, and, and so I just have a comment about the cameras um, that, that were brought up and what the response from the Department of Parks and Recreation was about, uh, they don't have the infrastructure in place. And so I'm, I'm, I'm curious, uh, you've got Spectrum and Hawaiian Telecom that install their fiber optic networks and their, their telecommunications infrastructure. And it would seem to me that that's something that the city would use as a tool to utilize their resources and contract with them. So I don't, I think I agree that they don't have the IT infrastructure available to do this when, uh, that's, that's a standard practice for any government organizations. They contract out to the, the telecommunications providers for, um, IT services, uh, to fulfill whatever project is required. So I just would think that that DPR answer might, is lacking. They could be expanding on a little bit. And then my final comment on this is maybe for the board, uh, maybe for next meeting. Maybe we can get the DPR and, and Environmental at some point to come out and kind of brief, brief us on these things because I think that the, you know, it's, it's a pretty, pretty, uh, um, um, pretty big area and to have a response like on number six here that says, um, "Our staff is aware of an issue and we perform monthly monitoring events for illegal camping within our parks and facilities." But I, I think we just, we have a pretty extensive issue going on right now. Um, and I think that the DPR and Environmental should be coming down here and give us more information, just these kind of responses. So if the board maybe can look into that for future, uh, board meetings, I appreciate it and thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Corona.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else in the room have a comment, question? Um, if not, I'm gonna go to Board Member Meyer. Okay, please come, state your name.
Aloha, Arbiela Kelly Benavides. Um, is this pertaining to city and county also, like DMV?
Yes, this is, um, Mayor's Rep.
Okay, I have a question. Um, when moving from one state to the other state, from the 48 continuous states to here Hawaii, what is the statewide city and county policy for individuals moving, um, here to obtain their driver's license that has a star, a gold star on it? Um, I was told that I have to go ahead, return my, call the DMV over to the outer state to ask them to send me an ID which I have to pay for that doesn't have the star. And then I have to go ahead and that's the only way they'll give me another state ID here in Hawaii, which I have to pay again, but I don't need to take the driver's test or the written test. And if I don't do that, I have to retake the whole test again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, we are gonna go to Board Member Myers and then we are gonna move on to our next agenda items. So go ahead.
Okay, um, I had asked the Mayor's Rep, I just wanted to, uh, share with the community members online and in the room, to please share with your Ohana that the Mayor's, uh, has had a news release and there's $25 million available for rent and utility assistance or relief. Um, and the next in-person enrollment event for new applications are on Thursday, July 27, from nine o'clock to 4:00 PM at the Filipino Community Center. And so there's a, you have to schedule it to apply. And so there's some phone numbers to call, um, 59, I'm sorry, 940-5209, 940-6993, 940-2838, 728-3508, or 741-6999, I'm sorry, 6966. We have some copies in the back and so you can see me after the meeting if you're very interested in, um, your Ohana applying. So it's income eligible, um, there's income limits, there's eligibility, um, information, first come, first served, and approved applications will be paid as long as the funds are available. So please share this with your family because this is, I'm not sure how much longer we're gonna have, um, monies for rent and utility assistance. Thank you, Chair.
Great, thank you so much. Um, okay, did you, did you have a question? Okay, quickly, quickly.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. Congratulations. This concerns, um, the Hono Project, which is under City and County now. I, most of you may not be, be aware, but the mayor was here, uh, Pocaipea this past Friday. Okay? Um, the Hono Project supposedly has a permit for Nanikai Beach Park across from 76 gas station. They only have a permit for the fenced-in area, okay? But they've been forcing their permit for the whole park, which they don't have. Just yesterday, they kicked a couple of people off of that beach park at one o'clock yesterday afternoon. The Hono Project sent their specialized police officers and the Sheriff's Department to them and told them they had to leave because the Hono Project has a permit for that beach park. Now, I was told face to face by Miss Thielen this past Friday that the Hono Project only has a permit for their fenced-in area, okay? Now, I've had problems with it just before that. And I told, and I asked the lady, young lady that's operating the Hono Project, I said, "What happens if a family comes in, wants to set up for a birthday party?" "Oh, we gotta, we gotta tell them to leave." I told them, "That's not right. We have the use, we have the use of that park. You only have the permit around the fenced-in area, inside the fenced-in area that you folks have." And my question is, why did they send a specialized police officer, which they said they did come from the Hono Project, and the Sheriff's Department at one o'clock in the afternoon to tell this family they had to leave? That's not right.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Erwin, yes, if you could just please, uh, take those comments back and follow up with us next month?
Yes.
Awesome, very good. Okay, we're gonna move forward now, uh, to Councilmember Andrea Tupola. And we have Kika here, her representative. Kika, if you could just state your name for the record.
Good evening, Board, and congratulations to all your new Board members and our new chair. Um, I would just like to introduce myself. Um, I'm Councilmember Tupola's community liaison, uh, Kika Tupenny. And, uh, I just wanted to share with you guys, um, some transparency with, uh, Councilmember Tupola's memo, um, rejecting the 64% raise, um, that was given on July 1st to the council. Um, she, she submitted it, and it's a memo to, in writing, stating that she will not be, um, accepting or taking the raise even though it was approved. Um, we also would like to share, um, Bill 56. Uh, we do have copies for the community if you guys would like. Uh, we have a revised Bill of 56. This would be, uh, with DPP. Um, some changes to it where there's things that are changed to where you don't need a permit for several things. So kind of an easier step for everyone to have, um, that is stated in Bill 56, which is on the committee table and everything was sent to the board as well. Um, we also would like to share kind of, um, point in time. Uh, we've been working with the point in time, uh, most recent PIT count, uh, shows drastic increase in the homelessness on the website. In 2022, we started Restore, Reconnect, Revive, um, that Councilmember Tupola had put together. It's a homeless outreach that she has been working, um, and doing a cohort. So we started in 2002 and will be on our third cohort this year, starting August. We're doing it in five locations, working with, um, getting database from point in time, but also with Calhoun West, the comprehensive, all the outreaches that we could. We are also working with the City DDC, um, community, um, city portion to help us kind of advocate more city workers, uh, more outreach workers. And also, um, obviously, you guys see the homeless here from Nana Kuli, starting all the way down to Kaena. Um, so in the five locations, we have Kapule, Nana Kuli, Maili, Wainai, and Makaha. So in Nana Kuli, in this area, the LMS Church is helping us, um, provide food, showers and other resources there for the R3 program. So we just open up to the community. If you guys want to, um, call our office and we'd like to have the community help us do outreach and other, um, forms of service to our houseless. Other than that, that's all we have report for right now.
Thank you so much. Uh, questions, Board members? Any questions? Uh, Board Member Myers, any, and to the left, seeing none. I just wanna encourage, uh, community, if you do want to ask, uh, a question, if you wanna start lining up, uh, that would be helpful for sake of time. So, Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanna make one, um, comment for you to take back to, uh, Councilmember Tupola. I, I deeply and truly appreciate that she's rejecting this increase and she's standing by her no vote because I understand that she voted no for the pay increase. And by her saying that, she does not want the increase like the other council members, I so, so, so appreciate that she, you know, taking a stance on that. Um, I don't know if it can be, you know, turned over, uh, you know, it, but I, but I appreciate it. I was, um, listening to a board meeting and one of the, uh, community members were stating that with each person not taking an increase, so many handy vans could be purchased because this was a disabled person and they were struggling to get services, you know? They had to wait like four hours before they got picked up because of the lack of, um, you know, vans, handy vans. And so please tell her that I duly noted her, um, what she's taking a stance for and I really, really appreciate it. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Uh, I see no one from the community. We're gonna go ahead to go online. Okay, please line up to the microphone. And then Salsedos will come over to you. Again, any other community members wanting to ask a question in person, please line up.
Hi, um, my name is Edmund again. Um, my, it's not actually a question, but I have more of a plea. Um, I was hoping that she would be here. Um, my plea to, um, Councilmember, um, Tupola is, you know, we, we cannot endure another four years of this mail. Please consider running for mayor in 2024. You know, I know it's a sure thing, you probably win District One and maybe you feel that you can, um, you know, best serve our community. But you know what? In these last four years, you've done that and because this guy has been right there opposing you pretty much all the way, same four years gonna happen. We need to get this guy out of the way. We have shown no improvement. You know, normally I wouldn't come to these meetings to have a great passion to come up to the mic and say something, you know? Friday, January 14th, man, Ulaava Beach Park resembled Thunderdome. Two men enter, one guy died. He went to an ambulance. The homeless population or, um, um, houseless or challenged, whatever the term is, that's probably correct, right, has been increasing all this time from the time Kirk Caldwell was here. And this last three years, this mayor has done nothing again. I cannot say any more than that. He has done nothing for the Wainai Coast. He's thrown some makeup and paint at Babel, um, sorry, Pocai Bay Beach Park and maybe Canaia Loli, but in actuality, he has not improved the condition of living or quality of life on the Wainai Coast. And he will not if we give him another four years. So pleading again, Councilmember Tupola, please make the decision to maybe run for governor. It's up to you. I'm sorry, mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Edmund.
Very passionate, yeah, sorry.
Okay, so we're gonna move on to, uh, online. Uh, Salsedos, uh, you're up.
Hello, uh, congratulations, Samantha and all the new male, new members on the board. Congratulations. And, uh, for Tupola's office, we need this, uh, challenge of cesspool's conversion to be heard. Uh, a person of interest to this committee, put it before the Neighborhood Board will be Roger Backoff of the Environmental. He handles the wastewater. Uh, further, we need to challenge Bill Seven dated 20, uh, uh, March 18th, I mean, take that back, February 19, 2020. Need to challenge that before the full City Council to be revised. Was it denied public testimony? Give us, denied our rights to public testimony to oppose this and protest against this. So please, uh, City Council, please take this back for, uh, consideration. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Uncle. Uh, okay, we're gonna move on, uh, to Governor's Rep. Uh, I do wanna be mindful, we have, uh, our, uh, Nana Kuli High and Intermediate School Homecoming, uh, that's gonna be presenting too, so we don't want to keep them up past their bedtime. Uh, so, uh, Governor's Rep, if you could come to the microphone, please, um. Oh, online, Gary?
Aloha, my name is Kelson Piaiva. I'm filling for Gary Amashiro tonight. Uh, good evening, Board members. Uh, congratulations on your, um, appointment to the, the office positions. Um, I have two things to highlight for you folks tonight. Uh, the first thing submitted in our Governor's Newsletter, uh, talks about the Homeowner Assistant Fund, um, program. The eligibility program has expanded its options to qualify for that. So if you wanna qualify, uh, there's more information on the HHFTC website. Uh, also, there was a inquiry request and from the previous meeting from Mr. Corona regarding the emergency sirens systems being out of commission for the past couple of years. Uh, we did follow up with Haima on getting an update on that being repaired. Apparently, there's, uh, multiple sirens in the Nana Kuli, Maili area that have been targeted by vandalism. And so, uh, it, it is, uh, being worked on, on getting corrected and fixed. Uh, we are, they actually are working on getting a lift truck out there to lift the, the, uh, equipment higher on the post. That way it reduces the amount of vandalism. Uh, but in the meantime, until that's been corrected, uh, other alert systems, such as the wireless emergency alert system, uh, mobile devices and cable television are also available for alerts. That's all, and that's all for us. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, open it up for questions, Board members? Any questions for Governor's Rep? Seeing none, community members? Any questions for Governor's Rep? No, online, no? Okay, we're moving on. Thank you. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh... Next on the agenda is, no, I'm watching online, I'm watching online. Thank you so much, Kelson, we appreciate you coming through and visiting and being with us virtually. So right now, we're gonna move on to our next item agenda, Nanakuli High and Intermediate School Homecoming Parade under Robin Kitu. So we're gonna ask the students to come up right now, they have a presentation. For, I apologize, they want to share about their homecoming parade, so let's welcome them.
Hello, everyone, thank you for your time tonight. And we'll be presenting about our requests for the pep rally. Hi, everybody, my name is Danielle Jose, I am a senior at NHIS. Our homecoming parade will be Wednesday, October fourth, from four to five, starting at First Road and at our school. We hope the community will come out and support students as we celebrate our homecoming game against the Mualu Menihunis. Our homecoming game is Friday, October sixth, and the pep rally is also on the same day. We invite all of our NHIS alumni to our pep rally. Please watch our social media for more information as we get closer to the event. Thank you for your time.
Okay, awesome, board members, any questions? Questions from the community? Anyone online? I do want to say, thank you very much for being with us. I love seeing young visit us, you know, here at the neighborhood board and being a voice for your generation. If there is anything that we can continue to support you on, in touch with us, but no questions? Anyone? Good? Okay, Board Member Augustine?
Hi, thank you for presenting and we're looking forward to the homecoming parade, Hawksbebe. So how can organizations or individuals who are interested in becoming a part of the parade get involved?
Um, I think I can email Mr. Robin Kitu from our school and we should be able to get you a spot in the parade. And you just, everybody meets up at the church on First Road. It's like a big family get together, everybody sets up for the parade and then by four o'clock, we roll out and we walk up to Ave.
Thank you. Nice, very good, okay, we are moving on. Yes, thank you guys so much, let's give them a round of applause for being here. Thank you guys so much, yeah, good job, awesome. Awesome. Okay. Okay, all right, at this time, we're gonna open it up for community concerns. So residents, if you want to come to the microphone, it is a two-minute limit if you can share. Go ahead, introduce yourself, go up to the microphone and go ahead.
Yeah, David Corona, Maile resident, and I just wanted to recap on, I think it was last month's, the previous month's board meeting where the board voted to not support a tax, property tax exemption because of the landfill proximity. But I just want to make the board aware that Bill thirty-nine was introduced by Chair Tommy Waters to make a one-mile buffer zone for property tax exclusion for people or for residences within a mile proximity to the, to a landfill. And my concern with that is, and I just want to just throw this out there, and I'm not trying to sway anybody, but I just want to make a comment here about one of the comments in the bill itself that says that the council further finds that the establishment of these new landfills, so the key word there is new, is a critical importance and that a real property tax exemption for residents in close proximity to new facilities may provide a reasonable incentive for local homeowners. So it makes, it makes me think that, that this is an opening that would allow that landfill to be put back in our community because we give you the opportunity of not having to pay a property tax. Well, think about a one-mile area in the Nanakuli area right now, in the Waimanalo Gulch, right? Right now, in that one-mile area, the entire Nanakuli coast would not have to pay property taxes on homelands or non-homeland properties. So that's a big revenue loss for, for the city and services that we rely on. So I just want to put that out there that, that Bill thirty-nine was introduced by Tommy Waters to put a one-mile exclusion for property tax collection. And that the term for new sites, just be careful that it appears that that would open the door for things like they're considering putting potentially, which they haven't come out and said in writing, that, that they would not use Lualua Lake Naval Base as a location, even though they've said that they wouldn't consider it. It's not in writing. And until it's in writing, we cannot sit there and take that for, for what it's worth until it's there. So just take a look at City Council, Bill thirty-nine, if you, if you're interested. And just kind of maybe talk to Councilman Tupola about this, thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Mr. Corona. Next up, community concerns, please come to the microphone, state your name.
Hi, congratulations, board and chair. My name is Carol Pelikai and I help the Wainai Economic Development Council. And right now in Nanakuli, we're sponsoring the Nanakuli Makaki. So I have these flyers, if you didn't get one when you came in, and it's on the table. We're starting a night market, starting in August. And we surveyed the community and the community wanted to do night market because in the day in the parking lot at the Nanakuli Village, it's really hot. And I have kupunas started to come in May. And we tested to see how, how we could really have activities with our kupunas. And we started with like about twenty kupunas in May. Now we're close to forty-five kupunas that are coming. And many of them are coming from Nanakuli. And, and there's, you know, the reason why I started to do the kupuna activity is I was the director of the Wainai, what do you call that, kupuna activity center. And when COVID happened, we had to close and then there was nothing for the kupunas. So I have a lot of them who have been asking me for several years that they want to have something. Can they do something? And I no longer work for the Lana Kila Meals on Wheels Kupuna Center. So when, you know, we're doing this, Makaki at the Nanakuli Village, I wanted to do something for the kupunas. So we, we, Wainai Comprehensive is sponsoring the tent and PVT is providing all the meals for the kupunas. And I have volunteers that go down and help do bingo and exercise and other activities with them. So this coming August, we're gonna have the night market until November. So we, you know, we really want the community to come out and participate, you know, by, with the local vendors. You know, we have something in our community, but you know, our people don't come out, you know. And so we found that the night market was, we had more participants, a lot of families starting to come out. So we're hoping that, you know, especially Nanakuli, please come out and support our local vendors. And if you can help promote and let the kupunas know, they're invited to come and they can call this number on here and RSVP. We're also gonna have talent, anybody who has talent, they can get on the stage and perform. And we have a car show at all of these events.
Okay, and you're gonna have pamphlets in the back?
And we have pamphlets on the table.
So please take a pamphlet before you go and please come out and support our local businesses and our local events. Thank you so much, Carol. We're gonna go online right now to, oh, we have uncle, okay. We'll go over to Naomi, online, if you can unmute yourself, you have a community concern?
Hi, good evening, I do not have a community concern, but I did want to just introduce myself. My name is Naomi Kukak, I'm here to reach out tonight on behalf of Simone Pietri Enterprises and the Aloha Carbon Project. So last year, we presented to this board about our waste diversion and recycling project. And two things, one, we wanted to discuss possibly getting on the agenda for either next month or the following month to give an update on the work that we've been doing in regards to that project. And two, we also wanted to get in touch with whomever the appropriate committee chair would be or even board member to open up a dialogue as we begin to prepare our environmental assessment for public comment, if we may.
Okay, I will go ahead and private message you my email and we'll go from there, thank you so much. Community concern? Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Hello again, it's Ed again. Hey, I just wanted to say about that tax break. What, you know, I brought that to the neighborhood board and nobody seemed to support that and cleaning of the Hualava Canal. It's in our community, I couldn't believe that. So now you guys seeing what unfolding with Tommy Waters. I mean, my whole thing is, if I bring a concern or a resolution and it doesn't get, I'll go somewhere else and get it done. I mean, that's why we elect people in this neighborhood, but I'm not saying was you guys, you know, most of you guys, but. So it's going to, I went, and I brought that up, I went to the legislators, we got that thing too, even though it's a city thing. We went and take it to the city council, Tupola was a no-show over there. Increase her community? Maybe she had something for do, but you know. About landfills, Blenjari came down here, you know, I, you know, I come here, you know, if you like lip about our mayor, you like lip about brother, then go out there and do something about it. Show yourself out there, what you doing to help out this community? No, you can't lip, you know, how we gonna get things done when you're lipping and when you criticizing? You know, I went there because I knew the mayor was gonna get criticized. How can we come halfway and meet halfway so we can get the thing done? I know how the law work. I got bills too. And you know, I got the Alzheimer's too with Darius and my son, that's one million dollars. Tell me if that, if we cannot use that. But my concern is, Blenjari said there's no landfill, so what we gonna do about it? Huh? We gonna close Waimanalo down? Remember that, it's only leave us one landfill. And if you ask me, I've been here, living in Nanakuli all my life. My backyard was PVT's front yard and I hate to come up here and remind everybody about that, about the hundreds of trucks coming in. I got a lot of family live on highway, including me, right? Nobody know what we go to. From eighty-five to now, why can't we give our people in Nanakuli some kind of relief? Yeah, I understand, PVT gives scholarships, it's good, it's a good thing, they should be giving that and more. I'm not too sure if they gave one million dollars since nineteen eighty-five, maybe just a little. Come on, that's change in ashtray. You know what I mean? Hey, we said no landfill, no, we let the dumping, huh? Is that people gonna come here and lip and criticize the mayor, the governor, our representatives? How we gonna get anything done? If you can do one better job, then run. Run for mayor. Not come over here and lip. You know what I mean? When we come here, it's for Nanakuli. You know, it's a wreck that Wainai come out and tell us all for do, but we don't go to Wainai and tell them all for do. You know what I mean? You guys understand, right? I wasn't born yesterday. So that with Tommy Waters, give us a break, the people who live here. Those who don't live here and not affected, they really don't know what the health and wellness and why people seek. Is it coming from there? Why don't they come and address us and do one study on that? Prove us wrong, prove, my dad died, my cousins died, our whole neighborhood died alongside that landfill. They prove us wrong if you're right. But don't come here and criticize and, you know what I mean? Our elected officials, man, go run, go run. See if you can do one better job. And then I can come and criticize you and see how you like it. No yap, because if you don't yap, do something about it. Get out there and I can tell you what I did out there. I fed thousands of people out there. I gave milk, juice, six hundred thousand, because I love my community. I'm not gonna come up here and speak trash. I know what the system is, you know, and a big concern is, when the contraflow line gets shut down, when the cops not there, these cars coming out of Kalaniano, they're making left turns. And I seen three different occasions and one of those, my grandson, that almost got hit because one idiot made one left turn. Number two concerns is we need to get our sidewalks for disability. You know, our people, our kids walk from the school to series seven, you can't walk over there by the ranch. I tried having my cousin with his scooter go too, we couldn't. And that's a big concern, that's the things we need. Our officials, maybe if you talk to the border water guy nicely, we can get shit done. You gonna keep picking on them, you're not gonna get shit done. And I got a lot of stuffs done, done by talking nice, meeting them halfway, thank you.
Appreciate that, uncle, thank you so much, thank you very much. Okay?
Okay? Quickly. Jonathan Holman, Wainai Board Chairman, I am sorry, uncle, yeah, we gotta be nice to the elected officials. But I want to bring up one thing, there's three things that I did. Wainai Board had voted to deputize the board on a volunteer basis to give them the authority. They already have the authority because we elected by the people, imagine that power you have. Number two, we got a traffic issue and I would like to work, I would like to work in collaboration with the Nanakuli Board because I would like to open up these roads right here to get the keys so that we can eliminate all the traffic coming into Wainai. It's a traffic hazard, it's called traffic management according to the HDOT with Department of Transportation. The third thing that happened is that we got two bridges, I know it doesn't concern you, but it should because we're all one eye, we're together. We need to work hand in hand. So there's two bridges down Makaha, here's the solution, we're gonna open on back. I'm gonna do it. So I'm an action kind of guy, you'll see, I'll be running and plowing my way up these things, but Wainai went and deputized the board, at the same time we did, we same time we taking care of traffic issue and we're gonna get the keys to this military places back in, it's called Haila Lua Road and also by the McDonald's, you go up, you take that left, you go right behind there and you can see the straight shot all the way down to the Wainai Comprehensive Center. I just want to bring that up, I'm a solution kind of, I think.
Thank you, Mr. Holman Amalui. Okay, moving on, we are going to go to board items, sorry, board business. Okay. Item A, meeting date, time and location, the Nanakuli Maili Neighborhood Board, number thirty-six. Presently meets on the third Tuesday of the month, seven PM at the Nanakuli Public Library. Do I have a motion?
Chair, I'd like to move that we continue to have our meetings on the third Tuesday of the month at seven PM at the Nanakuli Public Library.
Okay, we currently have a motion on the floor to keep the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board same day, time and location. Do I have a second to the motion? Okay, we have a motion and we have a second discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Any abstain? Okay, so we are keeping the Nanakuli Neighborhood Board currently on Thursday, Tuesday of each month, seven PM at the Nanakuli Public Library. Forward to Item B, board recess schedule. The board is allotted three recesses with the term year, July first, twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion to go ahead?
Chair, I'd like to suggest that our Nanakuli Neighborhood Board normally takes recess, one recess a year in December, so that we can all celebrate our Christmas, otherwise we'll be here for the third Tuesday of the month. So I'd like to make a motion that we recess in December.
Okay, I currently have a motion to recess one time this year, which will be in December. Motion made by Board Member Myers, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second by Board Member Ayo. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, motion moves, one recess this year in December. Moving on to the adoption. Moving on, uh, to the adoption of oral testimony rules. The board is to determine the amount of allocated time for speakers along with a designated timekeeper. Do I have a motion?
Yes, Chair. I'd like to, um, adopt that oral testimony as suggested that the board allocate ten minutes for presentation, two minutes for community concerns, and two minutes for questions, responses. And the timekeeper would be our, um, our sergeant-at-arms.
Okay, I have a motion to have presentations be ten minutes each. Uh, community concerns, two minutes each, responses and questions, two minutes each. Uh, do I have a second? Okay, uh, all those, uh, in support, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Motion, the ayes have it, motion moves. Uh, moving forward to, oh, oh, okay. Uh, okay, uh, and then, uh, moving on to item D, creation of board committees and chairs. The chair will designate committees at, from twenty twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
Chair, for the interest of time, uh, because I do want us to hear our unfinished business, so that we can get back to DPP regarding the sub. And also, I think it's important for us to hear our elected officials. I'd like to move for our board to defer both items seven D and seven E tonight to defer them for next month. And most especially after we get a ninth board, uh, member on the, on the, on the board so that they can be part of the committees as well as the, take a, um, rule, I'm sorry, to vote on the committee rules.
Okay, currently the motion is to defer, uh, seven D and seven E to next month. Do I have a second? All of those, uh, in support, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, no's? Any abstain? Oh, I apologize. Uh, abstain, board member Tector? Okay, the ayes have it. Uh, we will defer, uh, seven D and seven E to next month's agenda. Uh, moving on to, uh, F, approval of Tuesday, June thirteenth, twenty twenty-three regular meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
So move, Chair.
Okay, do I have a second to approve the, uh, June regular meeting minutes? Okay, all of those in support, say aye.
Aye.
Any, uh, nays? Okay, board member Tector, any, uh, abstains? Board member Augustine, the ayes have it. Uh, we approve for the regular meeting minutes for June. Uh, moving forward to approval of Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting agenda. Do I have a motion?
So move, Chair.
Uh, okay, um, all those in, uh, sorry, I apologize. Do I have a second? Approval for Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting agenda. Do I have a second? No second? Okay, second, uh, all those in support, say aye. All those opposed, say nay.
Chair, like, can I suggest that you take it to discussion?
Uh, hold on one second. All those abstain? Okay, doesn't pass, abstains have it? Okay, moving on, uh, board, uh, item H, board member attendance at community meetings. Uh, board members, have you attended, uh, community meetings?
Chair, point of order. Um, can we get the neighborhood board assistant to, uh, inform us of, if we don't adopt and approve tonight's board meeting, I mean, board agenda, that's item G, to approval of tonight's regular meeting agenda, that isn't, isn't the rules say that everything that we did tonight is null and void?
Not to my knowledge, but I will have to look into it.
Chair, may I ask the board members for reconsideration of tonight's agenda? It's a discussion and if, if anybody could, that had abstained, could explain why they don't want to accept this agenda and, uh, what we've already started to discuss.
Okay, right now there's a motion on the floor to bring the item G back up for discussion. Approval of Tuesday, July twenty-three, regular meeting agenda. Motion is to bring it back up to rediscussion. All those in port, in support, say aye.
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 All those in support, uh, opposed, say no. Okay, uh, abstain? The ayes have it. We'll open it up for discussion. Um, at this time, uh, discussion is open for approval of uh, board member Tector. Do I have anybody on this side for, open for discussion? We'll go to board member Tector.
Um, this is for, uh, Roman numeral seven, uh, item G. And part of this, having the agenda, um, when it was open, it's, it's an approval as it is. Otherwise, from the beginning, it's null and void. But to accept the agenda later, because you guys already approved the minutes for June. So, um, it is approved. Otherwise, this is a waste of time, everybody's time and and if it's null and void, then we already went over the time, madam, madam chair. So, why, that's why I abstained.
Okay. Uh, any other discussion, board members? Any discussion? Okay. We'll take another vote. All those in favor to approve the Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting agenda, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay. Abstain? The ayes have it. Approval of Tuesday, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting agenda. Moving on to section H, board member attendance at community meetings, public hearings. Board members, uh, if you have, uh, attended any community meetings. Uh, we will start from the left and go ahead, Uncle Paul.
Uh, YNI, uh, board meeting was the, uh, Kupuna Council meeting. And then myself and Darius was up at the high school because he had a town meeting for education. You know, sign waving for safety concerns on the highway with Darius. Then, uh, Mayor Blenjari's, uh, presentation at Hokai Bay on the fourteenth last week, Friday. And I'm, I'm kind of sad or sorry that a lot of people didn't attend that meeting. It was open air out in the beach, under the tree. And you could ask him, actually, he covered, uh, the biggest problem on our side of the island. He covered that one extensively. Homelessness or houselessness.
Okay.
That.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I think us as a board, if you got something that was sent to you as a text message or a phone call as a board member, send that text out to all your constituents or everybody.
Okay, uncle, I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to, um, we're gonna end your comments. Uh, any other community events that you attended?
That was it.
Okay, thank you. Um, moving forward, uh, board member Hano Hano. Kea. Okay, we'll start. Uh, Ed Hano Hano, board member Tector, board member.
Uh, yes, I attended the town hall meeting with Tupola as well as the other town hall meeting with, uh, Nanakuli Ahu Pua.
Board member Augustine?
Oh, and Darius's meeting.
I attended the town hall for the Board of Education with Darius Keela. And also the Ahu Puaa on Nanakuli, um, homestead.
Okay, board member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. I attended the YNI Neighborhood Board meeting. I also attended the YNI Community Sustainable Plans, um, CPAC meeting. And also the Nanakuli Ahu Pua, uh, um, Association meeting.
Okay, thank you. And for myself, I also attended Nanakuli Ahu Pua meeting. Uh, Representative Darius Keela's Town Hall, uh, YNI Neighborhood Board, YNI Sustainability Meeting. And the, uh, Back to School Bash at First Baptist Church of Nanakuli. Okay. All right. All right, that's it. Board business? Do you have a comment, board member Augustine?
Yeah.
All right, moving on, uh, to, um, unfinished business. We have tonight with us the Samoan Methodist Church, uh, located at eight seven two five one A Pa'akea Road, YNI. Uh, requesting, uh, for a special use permit, uh, discussion from, uh, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. Presentation of board support. So if you can make your way to the, uh, microphone, thank you so much. Please introduce yourself.
Aloha and good evening. For those of you who don't know me from last year's meeting, my name is Yohann Inusa. But you all can call me John. I know it is late, so I won't waste any more of your time. Along with me tonight, I have Mr. James, uh, Mr. Jim Hayes, our representative from Planning Solution, who is here to further clarify and elaborate on what is in progress for the first phase of our project. So before I yield to him the rest of our time, I would like to take this moment to offer an apology to the Madam Chair, members of the board, and the wonderful members of Nanakuli community. There is some misunderstanding information within our organization that has given a negative view and change of heart for some of you here tonight. Therefore, I humbly ask for your forgiveness and ask that you give us time to fix any mistake that we may have made. And hope that we continue to build a strong relationship with you all. Mahalo and God bless.
Thank you, board, for, uh, allowing us to present, uh, in tonight's meeting. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Jim Hayes. I'm with Planning Solutions. I'm assisting John and the church's board to obtain permits and approvals necessary to proceed with the church development on the subject site, uh, on Pa'akea Road in Mailei. And for those that aren't familiar with the process, it's agriculturally zoned land. And the church is a meeting facility, uh, by the land use rules. And to use the site in that way, uh, we must obtain a special use permit first. That's the current application being considered by the Planning Commission. And assuming that is successful, then we will also have to obtain a conditional use permit uh, from the Department of Planning and Permitting. Recently, uh, we submitted our S U P application to the Department of Planning and Permitting and they have, um, made a recommendation to the Planning Commission to oppose or reject our application. And the neighborhood board and some community members provided comments to the department on this topic. And I just wanted to cover some of the, um, issues at hand. Uh, because the Planning Commission will be meeting on August ninth to consider our application. So first off, there's some question about why the current proposal is sort of different from what was presented to this board previously, prior to my involvement. And the main reason for this is that, like John mentioned, this is the first phase of the project. And now the church has been, um, learning about the site and utilizing the site in some limited ways. And, uh, learning what they can actually do there, given the space and the soil and the other, uh, attributes of the site. So this is the first phase and it includes landscaping, but it did not include agriculture because it's not a for-profit farm, right? It's, there will be, uh, plantings involved in this first phase. For instance, the ulu trees and other plantings. And some of the plantings have already been done, uh, as sort of experimental to see what can succeed on that site, given the conditions. Now, if those trials are successful, the second phase of the project may include some of the elements that were presented to this board previously, such as greenhouses, uh, and flower nurseries and things of that sort. Um, so that's where we are now, uh, and just probably people haven't read the full application, but the soil at the site is not very amenable to agriculture. It's hard coral. Uh, the reason it's zoned agriculture is just because that's kind of where it got lumped into back in the day. Uh, the other issue I wanted to discuss was the sewer connection. And there was some concern about the, the facility could be connected to the municipal sewer, which we've talked a lot about tonight. Um, the, we submitted an application to, uh, the Department of Environmental Services. They, they said it's a prohibit or a, and I can't remember the term that they used, but probationary, yes, or something like that. Uh, the situation is that in order to be connected to the sewer, we would have to most likely acquire easements from neighboring properties. And those properties may welcome this development because it would also perhaps enable them to hook up their sites to the domestic sewer system. But we haven't begun those discussions yet because we don't have any approvals to use the, the property at this time. Should we obtain the approvals we need to use the site for a church? Those discussions would begin. If we're unable to hook up the site to the sewer system, then like the other uses in that neighborhood, we would obtain a individual wastewater treatment facility or IWS. Uh, we'd obtain a permit for that from the Department of Health and, um, use that appropriately. Um, so another point I wanted to make was that in their report, the Department of Planning and Permitting suggested that the site could be used for agricultural purposes, such as livestock production, meaning cows, sheep, chicken or eggs, an agricultural product, products processing facility, composting or hydroponics. And those facilities, those types of uses, we felt would probably be less appealing to the community than a, than a church. Um, furthermore, given the size of the site and the type of neighbors around there, um, it didn't seem like a good fit. So if the church is not allowed to proceed on this site, um, the, the site will probably become another single-family dwelling. A couple of other issues, uh, that were brought up in the materials, uh, there was a comment related to fuel storage. Uh, there will not be any bulk fuel storage at the site. The only mention of fuel storage or fuel use in our application was related to construction and the fueling of equipment during that construction period. And lastly, uh, Mr. Corona, I know you, uh, submitted some comments on the, on the application and we appreciate your interest in the project. Um, and we'd like to talk with you at, at, uh, your convenience if you are so amenable. But that's the conclusion of my presentation. But we're open to questions and, um, understanding of what other concerns may be in the community.
Very good. Thank you very much, Jim, John. Thank you very much for being here. Uh, we're gonna open it up to the board for discussion.
Chair, thank you, Chair. Um, I was the only board member that was on the, on the, oh, myself and Paul were the only board members when the last time, um, you came to present, uh, your vision plan. Mr. Nusa, can you come to the mic, please? Um, and this is at eighty-seven dash two fifty-one A Pa'akea Road on YNI. When you shared with us the vision, the church purchased an agricultural two property because you shared with us that your, your vision was to get into the farming because that is an agricultural land. You never said that it was, your primary concern was to have a church. It was church purchasing and, um, being, you know, having the greenhouse, the ulu trees, et cetera, et cetera. So my question to you is, um, I have received reports that you've already have dwellings on it. Uh, when you came to our board, we supported it because you acknowledged that you needed to go through the permit process, that you bought the raw land and that you needed to go through the pro, permit process with your vision. And according to A, um, Ag two, you have approximately two point four four one acres. That, uh, for every two acres, you can put one dwelling. How many dwellings, from what I understand, you already have dwellings on the property. You came in October of last year. You came in October of last year. This is July of 2023, and not even a full year. And you already have dwellings on the lot?
No, we built those, and those are temporary dwellings.
They're a temporary dwellings. They're not five dwellings that are used for church service, et cetera?
No, the, the one that we use for the church is a tent. We use the tent to, to, to have our church service, but not every Sunday that we use that.
Okay, what about the cesspool that you dug in order to, because to have restroom facilities? Did you get a permit in order to do a cesspool? Because we all understand from the neighborhood board that the city has mandated that no more cesspools are built. You're supposed to tap into the wastewater. Did you do a permit and tap into the wastewater? Or you have just a whole cesspool?
Yeah, we, we didn't ask for a cesspool permit. But we're trying to, because people of our, of our church are coming in too. So we're trying to accommodate that, that need to use the cesspool. So it's, it's, it's far from the, the community where they live. So, and also the McDonald's and, and those places where we can just,
So you didn't get a permit in order, so you may be affecting the groundwater with the hole that you're currently using to have your waste from your toilets go into?
Yes.
Okay. Also, we've had neighbors that have reported to us that up to 80 cars are there all the way until late at night. And there's a lot of sound coming from it, either church service or other events. And so those are my concerns that I wanted to express to you. And in the interest of time, because we have to, as a board, the Planning Commission is going to be meeting on August 9th. So therefore, I would like to make a motion, considering from what I got your presentation and then all the complaints that have come in. And now you're, you know, you haven't got through the permitting process for anything above the ground. You can't put temporary structures. And you cannot do a, you know, a cesspool for wastewater because it could contaminate the groundwater. So I'd like to make a motion for our board to not support, to send to the Planning Commission that we do not support the sup, the special use permit application of the Samoan Methodist Church, RFI at 87-251 A Pa'akea Road, Yani, Hawaii 96792.
Okay, right now, we have a motion on the floor to not support the request for special use permit initiated by the Samoan Methodist Church, RFI at 87251 A Pa'akea Road. Do I have a second? Second?
I would like to make a motion to allow for more questions before we continue with this motion.
Okay, okay, very good.
Point of order, there's a motion and a second. So she would have to rescind just to open up for questions.
So. The motion was made and seconded. So Board Member Myers, so, so we're currently in discussion now. Okay, so Board Member Tector, Board Member Augustine, did you want to go as well? Board Member Augustine?
Yeah.
Board Member Tector, Board Member Augustine, then Board Member Hano Hano.
Um, I believe there was a approval first, but now we're having to take another stand with new boards. And they did go to the special permitting, and it was opposed. And so we need, I need a dialogue. I need to see the dates that is in question before I take a stand. And that way, we can, I can collectively vote correctly and not oppose anything when it comes to two acres ag. Honestly, just like any farm, wine and coffee is ag, but it's on Hawaiian homes and take. So I know they have more acreage, but I honestly need more information.
Chair, if it's open for me to respond to Tector to resolve your concern.
Okay, wait, hold on one second. Board Member Tector, are you done?
Yes.
Okay, Board Member Myers?
Thank you, Chair. As the previous Planning and Zoning Committee Chair, I was, received a report from the Department of Planning and Permitting. And they went out and did an inspection. And they had provided me with all the information that I'm providing to the board. So I'm sharing with you, with our neighborhood board. So they provided me with the report to report to the board everything that I shared tonight as the Planning and Zoning Committee Chair of the previous board. So now when we're on the new board, July, I'm sharing with you those concerns that DPP has that were all raised. And so I'm, everything that I shared with you, they went there and physically inspected. And that's why I shared with you the report tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Board Member Myers. Board Member Tector, then Board Member Naomi Hano Hano. I apologize. Board Member Augustine?
So as far as I understand, there are, in the permitting process, you are allowed up to two structures on a two-acre, on an Ag 2 property? And your proposal initially, because I wasn't a part of the board at the time, was to use it as a church, but have a greenhouse to support that church as well?
That's correct. So the original proposal and this current proposal is in line with that proposal. Like, we're trying to explain it's Phase 1 of the project, but the viability of some of like what you can plant and grow there remains in question. The previous occupant of the site was Orchid Farm, and they did all their work under shade cloth and a very elaborate hydroponic system. And to address some of the other issues, the, the use of the site or the current temporary structures at the site are more tent-oriented. And the church is trying to understand what the rules that apply to them are, which is much different than what their customs are, are used to. And they would like to have an opportunity to rectify these issues. And maybe we can close the cesspool that they mistakenly installed and bring in portable toilets instead. And then, as I explained previously, you know, do the final connection to the sewer system if that's allowed, if the permit is awarded. But right now, it's, you know, still at the, still needs to be considered by the special, by the Planning Commission, sorry.
Okay, thank you very much, Jim. Are you?
Yeah, and I think, thank you for your apology and for being forthright and honest about what's happening at your property when information is being made known to us. Because I feel like our churches are really involved with helping those who are in need in our community. And so it's not a fully a negative thing that's occurring. I think there's some situations that we need to try and adjust here. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Board Member Naomi Hano Hano?
Yes, thank you. I just did the second so we could open up discussion. So, yeah, according to Robert Schroes. So I feel if we were to take a vote tonight, I would abstain because I was not on the board and I don't have enough information, I feel, to make a decision either way. I don't know what the old plans are. I don't know what the new plans are. But I did make that second just to open up discussion. So thank you.
I apologize. Thank you for clarifying. Okay, Board Members, anyone else? Oh, still discussion? Okay, go ahead.
In further to discussion, Naomi, I want to clarify for you that when we had taken the vote last year, we were presented with a vision. And we were told we're going to go and submit for a supplemental use permit and all the permitting that was needed to fulfill their vision. So I'm not going backwards. I'm taking now that, you know, they had, they had submitted a special use permit now. And now that there's going up for review. And now that we've given information from DPP concerning when they went and took, because they were responding to the complaints from the neighbors that it wasn't being honored with agriculture on Pa'akea. And so that's what I'm bringing to the board. So I'm not asking us to change what was decided last year. I'm taking it straightforward from DPP's application that's in your packet, the SUP application. And that's what I'm asking the board to take into consideration, that this, they did not honor our board supporting them and going through the process. It's on video that we asked them, you're going to go through the plan. Instead, they put on five-inch structures, and they dug hole, and they taking the liberties to do these things without going through the permit process. So that's my consideration. And it's, of course, at the pleasure of the board, whatever it's voted upon is what's going to go to DPP. Whether it's abstaining or no, it's going to go to DPP as far as our discussions. And so community members or any board members, if they want to make a different position, they're welcome to follow through on DPP's application to make comments.
Okay, great. If there is no more further discussion, we can move forward with the motion. Any other discussion? Otherwise, we're going to move forward with the motion. No discussion.
Could I, could I have one more thing? Yeah. One of the reasons that the temporary structures were installed in advance of this permit, the permitting process is very elaborate and time-consuming. And they were having issues with people trespassing onto the site and utilizing the site in inappropriate ways. And so just to have a presence on the site was appropriate at that time. And that's part of the rationale there.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Board, let's move to a motion. Do I have a motion on the floor? Board Member Myers, a motion on the floor is to vote no.
I move, I move the Nanakuli, Miley Neighborhood Board, do not support the special use permit application of the Samoan Methodist Church, RFP, I'm sorry, RFI at 87-251 A Pa'akea Road, Yani, Hawaii 96792.
Okay, do I have a second? No. Okay, so now we're going to take a vote. Okay, so all in support, say aye. All, okay, so the motion on the floor is that we are not supporting the request of the special use permit. That is, for the special use permit. So if you want to support the...
Okay, so again, Member Myers stated the motion. Member Naomi Hano Hano seconded the motion. For the board vote, if you vote yes, then you're voting to not support the special use permit application. Okay? If you vote no, then it's the reverse, or you can abstain. Okay? I, in this case, since there was no reply from the first request for vote, I suggest we go to roll call vote. Okay? Okay, so again, if you vote yes, you're voting to not support the application. If you vote no, you're voting to support the application. If you vote abstain, then you're kanalua, you're indifferent. Okay? Member IO, your vote?
Abstain.
Okay, Member Naomi Hano Hano? Member Kea? Member Myers?
Yes.
Member Tector?
No.
Member Augustine?
No. No.
Oh, sorry. Okay, we'll go, Member Augustine?
No.
Okay. Member Tector?
No.
Member Ed Hano Hano? Okay. And Chair, your vote? Okay, thank you. Motion doesn't pass.
I'd like to make a motion.
We have a motion on the floor? State your motion.
I'd like to make a motion that with adjustments to ensuring that closing the cesspool and I advise that the recommendations of what should have been done upon the request initially be abided by to allow more time for us to make a vote in our next meeting to approve whether or not they can have a special permit.
I have a second.
Okay, one second, so it...
A special use permit for our next meeting, for our next agenda.
It's, we're talking about the special use permit. We need to make a comment. We're not making, okay, conditions that if they come, they clear the violations, that they're going to come back for our board. So that's not a very important item. What you're requesting is a new agenda item.
Well, sorry. The thing that needs to be taken into account is the fact that the Planning Commission is meeting to make a decision on their permit on August 9th, which will be before the next board meeting. So to have it on the August agenda is, is a moot point right now because the Planning Commission will have made their final decision on their application prior to, to the August meeting.
Okay, Board Member Augustine?
I rescind my motion.
Okay, motion has been rescinded. We're moving on. Board Member has, yeah, we're moving on. Okay, elected officials, Congresswoman Jill Tokuda, I believe we might have a rep online. David, okay? David, thank you so much. Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the board, thank you for having us here. My name is David Taga. I'm with the Office of Congresswoman Jill Tokuda. In the interest of time, we did submit a written report. I'll stand on that, but just make two very brief comments. First, two Saturdays ago, Jill was in this library, last, two Saturdays ago, having her town hall. We just want to say thank you to everyone who showed up to provide comments and to share their stories. And secondly, we always make this offer. Jill and her staff are always here to help anyone that needs help with a federal agency. That could be Veterans Benefits, Social Security, IRS issues. If anyone needs help, please go to our website, tokuda.house.gov. You can fill out the form that says Help with a Federal Agency, and we are always here to assist you. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you very much. Before I open it up for questions, I just want to do a time check. It's 9:48. We have 12 more minutes. And we have four more agenda items, five more agenda items. So I want to make sure that we are able to hear from our elected officials who are here and also virtually. So I'm going to open it up for questions for Congresswoman's rep, Board Members. Any questions from our board? Seeing none, any community questions in person? Any online? Okay, we're moving on. Thank you so much, David, for joining us. We look forward to seeing you next month. Please thank Congresswoman for being in our moku to, to meet with the community. Okay, if I can just ask for there to be quiet in the room, please? Okay, yep, quiet in the room, please. Sorry, Uncle Richard, Uncle Richard. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on. Item B, Senator Miley Shimabokoro. I see that she's online with us. Aloha, Miley. Aloha, Senator. Thank you so much for being with us.
Aloha. Congratulations to all the new board members. I just wanted to highlight, you know, that on the second page of my report are some of the main things that passed this session. And one of the things that is actually going to be in next month's column is the homeless return to home pilot program. It's modeled... It's modeled after a successful program that was under Mayor Haneman, where only out of seven hundred forty-four individuals who were returned to their home state, only sixteen were shown to return. And so this, to duplicate that, it's a hundred thousand dollars allocated as a start. And going to, this will be a voluntary program and we're just very hopeful that we'll see some really good results with that. And in the interest of time, I'll open up to questions to leave time for the other presenters.
Thank you so much, Senator. Board members, we're going to open it up for questions. Any questions? We have Board Member Myers, any questions on this side? Okay, we'll go to Board Member Myers.
I just really want to quickly acknowledge that your newsletter shares with the community all the accomplishments that have happened through this legislature, the wrap-up, but also the amount of money that is coming into our community, which we so appreciate it. I noted that the YNI homestead, that there's money that's going to be going there for CIP for the wastewater repairs, the sewer infrastructure repairs, much appreciated. And also the other acknowledgements of different recipients for scholarships now that we have graduation, et cetera. So I thank you also for bringing up the information about the rent and utility assistance that I spoke about earlier in the mayor's report and you provided more details about it. So thank you, Senator, much appreciated.
Mahalo, thanks, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, I apologize, Senator. Any questions from the community, any virtually? Oh, Uncle Richard, yeah, he's making his way. Thank you so much, go ahead, Uncle.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Board. Congratulations for our new board out here. Miley, I was informed today when I inquired about Mypala Oa Bridge. I've been trying to write on that for the last three years on what's taking so long. And I was instructed, or I was told this morning that we should see it open by June of next year. So I was kind of upset with the guy because he told me it was March of this year when I talked to him six months ago. So I was wondering if somebody can follow up for me with our politicians and find out what's. He told me a bunch of stuff, but one of the main things he said was a water line. They had to worry about the water line. And I asked him what water line had to do with actually opening up the bridge. Because my concern is the way they opened that bridge on that estuary. It's, it's, you know, it's for everybody. And on top of that, when you do that estuary, there's no, so you jam everything up for everybody that's in a hurry or trying to get out to work or from work. So I was wondering if somebody from your office or you yourself can actually try to address the situation for me. Thank you very much, thank you.
Sure, very, very good. I will second that Mypala Oa Bridge and what's the holdup and about the dangerous conditions. And I want to send a big shout out to DOT. They cut down that giant tree that was near the bridge that residents had been complaining about for quite some time. So big mahalo to DOT.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Senator. Any other questions? I see none online. Okay, thank you very much, Senator, for joining us. We look forward to seeing you next month. We're going to move on to Representative Darius Keela. Thank you so much for being here with us, Representative.
Aloha, Nanakuli Miley Neighborhood Board. Congratulations on your folks' elections and being in the positions that you folks are our last Neighborhood Board. I had the privilege to serve on the board and the work that you folks do is often thankless and not maybe recognized. So I am here to thank you for the work that you might not be thanked for in the next two years. And I look forward to working with you folks and I welcome the chance to also work with you folks, one-on-one or as a larger board. So as you folks got, so there was one legislative wrap-up where I focused primarily on the things that came out of the office for myself. And so that was the first one pager. And I believe Partner was able to send that to you folks in Germany. And then there was a recent one that you folks got, and there was a link that I provided as well to see newsletter happenings from post-session up until June. So I'm going to try with whenever we have our boards, I can report on the previous month instead of the current month. I'm going to try it out and see how it goes. So I'm sorry for the length, but I just want to let you know of the many things happened. If I can direct to see this year that was passed. We allocated six million dollars for the further construction of a performing arts center at the Nanakuli High Intermediate School. And before I go on, all previous CIPs under Rep Eli has been released. So the first two million for design and planning and then the 1.5 that's going to start the construction and upgrades for the boys' big ball field at the high school. So all of those have been released, thank you. And so now we're moving forward with future, and a million was appropriated to Nanakuli Elementary for a repainting. As we know, that school could use that. And five million dollars for this. I want you folks to see the bills and then the resolutions. We cast out twenty, correct, twenty-one bills, right? We cast out all these bills and hopefully something catches. These were the two that were able to catch it in the legislature. I'm really proud of the Alzheimer's one because I think that was something that you folks supported from the beginning. And we go back to taking Karakupuna. This billion-dollar appropriation will fund a public health campaign to actually help folks realize what dementia is, Alzheimer's, the resources and the support. As we know, folks. And so I think it's a big chance to do so. Uncle Ed was a huge advocate for that. I know some of you folks as well. I'm sorry about the time, there's just so much to talk about. The resolutions as well, the biggest one that I'm working on right now is a working group that was authorized to do Native Hawaiian intellectual property. As you folks know, that's a big thing happening in our communities, culture, like who owns culture and whatnot. So we're right now almost in the finalization of these, putting together names to convene the working group. As you folks also see, we've been very busy in the community. I want to go back to what Senator said about thanking DOT. I mean, from that tree, I'll be very transparent, that was private property. But DOT has once again come to help our community and take on that burden.
Thank you. Before, we've got three more minutes, so I do want to open it up for questions. I want to give us time to ask questions. Is it okay with that? Okay, so we'll open it up for questions now. Board Member Myers, anyone on this side, questions? Okay, go ahead, Board Member Myers.
I just want to really make this fast because of time. And I want to acknowledge to you that I personally understand that when I see a special Miley's report regarding monies that is coming to the community or bills that were passed, I totally understand that it's concerted with the House. So the House, both and the Senate, both have to agree for our community to get these things. So I wanted to applaud you for, you know, your being a freshman and that you're just doing so much. And, you know, when I look at these town hall meetings, like you have these town hall meetings, you've already had town hall meetings. And we saw you at Ahupua Oa Nanakuli meeting. I just saw, taken aback at how young you are, but how just forward-thinking you are. But most importantly, you just engage with the community. And you're like, okay, community, let's talk about this. Let's look into this. You know, DOT, lawmakers listening session, DHHL, resource fair, legislative priorities. You're already preparing for us and asking us, hey, community, hey, board members. On November twenty, you know, I want to know what you guys want for the next legislature in January. So I just want to applaud you that, you know, you just makha'ala our community. And so I think it's time that, you know, we acknowledge your efforts on your freshman year. So congratulations, thank you.
Thank you, Board Member Myers. And I ask that you folks please share those dates, you know, for folks who attended the last. The fact to get one-on-one time with Deputy, I mean, Super Ten and Hayashi is unheard of. And so I'm grateful for the members that came because you folks really got to engage with him, so thank you.
Thank you. We have a few seconds left with that. I want to mahalo you as well. Thank you very much for being present, bringing the resources and the people, the decision-makers here to our community so that they can hear our concerns. Because it's different when you have a middle person communicating the concern. It's, they have to be here and they have to hear it themselves. So I also want to mahalo you for that. So thank you very much. At this time, we are going to, do we have another time? Okay. Oh, mine says the kind. Okay, we're going to move on. Can we move on, Uncle Paul? Okay, okay, let's go ahead and move on to Arby. Thank you so much, Representative Keela. Mahalo for you for all that you're doing, we appreciate it. Okay. Okay.
Call Danny, he's standing by.
Yes, okay, Danny, you've got a few seconds, so, so go ahead.
Aloha, Chair, and everyone there. I've sent in the report earlier, so I'm standing by for any questions that you all might have. I do want to make one point. On the twenty-seventh of July, the Navy and Defense Logistics Agency with the EPA would like to invite the community to come out.
Ten seconds.
I'm sorry?
Sorry, I apologize. I'm just going to.
Yeah, so on the twenty-seventh at Alamanu Middle School, they're inviting the community to come out and participate in Red Hill Discussions about the closing.
Very good, thank you so much. At this time, we are going to end our meeting. We are a few seconds past time, so I want to go ahead and thank the board members for being here. Anything that is left over, we will defer over to the next meeting. I apologize, we were trying to get to you.
Chair, we have our emergency bypass road. Those two things, I think we need to get out at least because of what's happening tonight and tomorrow. Up to you, if you want to give me ten more seconds, we can get that out.
Okay, we cannot, I'm so sorry, we cannot.
It's okay.
Yeah, because NCO has to leave, we would have to make a motion for that.
We just have our written report.
Thank you so much, I appreciate that. But we're working on that next month. The goal is to get, hear from everybody. So at this point, we're going to go ahead and end the meeting? Okay, very good, we're going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you all for attending. Sorry, do I have a motion to adjourn? Okay, do you have a second? Thank you. We're adjourning.